All right.
Pledge of Allegiance.
All right.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk John, would you call the order?
Be happy to call the order for the council meeting of June 21st at 7:00 PM or more exactly, 7:08. Councillor Donahue is absent. Councillor Khan?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Lane?
Here.
Councillor McCauley?
Present.
Councillor Preston?
Here.
Councillor Vogel?
Present.
Councillor Wallace?
Present.
Councillor Wright?
I think he's dialing in, it looks like. But it's not going to help, though, because the problem's on our end, so.
Councillor Wright?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Councillor Zee?
Here.
Councillor Cameron?
Here.
And Council President?
Here.
We have 10 present, one absent, one remote.
All right. Public comment.
Good luck with that.
So, for the norms, if we have people online who want to raise their hand for public comment, please do so.
Nobody, huh?
And then I'll go through the folks online first.
Exactly.
And then we'll go through those in the room afterwards, so, yeah, I will.
Yeah. It won't be stereo either.
No one?
No one here? Okay, so it looks like there's one person in the attendees that wants to speak for public comment.
Oh. I'm on her.
Ethan brought up speakers.
Oh, good.
So, Councillor Donahue, are you participating in the meeting? And can you hear us?
I can hear you guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't see me come in, I was a minute behind, sorry.
All right, so noted, we have all other councillors present, we do not have any public comments. So, moving on to the agenda.
So, we have two transfers coming in, transfer 133, which is legal settlements, 13,005, to Brown School, protective measures, same amount. And we have transfer 134 from the Clerk's office, solid waste, $1,500, to Clerk Administration, same amount.
Motion to refer to budget and finance collectively?
Second. Roll call.
Roll call on the referral, Councillor Donahue.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
And Councillor Shan?
Yes. All right, next, it does say orders, it should have said committee items, it should be just budget and finance. So with that being said, I will defer to the Chair of Budget and Finance to make comments on what we're about to do.
Okay, thank you very much, President. All right, good evening, everybody, so I'll just start off with a motion, and that's motion to approve the budget. Thank you. So, thank you to the President, I just wanted to give a couple of quick intro points. So, here we are, it's June 21st, we're quite a ways into this, and just wanted to kind of give a little bit of context before we go into each page, not very long. This is the product of a considerable amount of work, going all the way back to November. So before we get into potentially reasoned disagreements here, I just wanted to thank everybody, it's been a lot of meetings, the CIP and the budget didn't quite align as nicely as we would have liked this year, and many of us have been in this room or in a room like this, three to four nights a week for the past three months or so, so it's been a lot of work there, and I appreciate it, and we've also tried to squeeze in other budget and finance and committee of the whole work, so thank you to everybody for that. The second thing I wanted to mention is just a quick, you know, it's never quick, but a quick primer on how this relates to setting the tax rate, in part for our benefit here in our discussion, heading into the fall, but also to head off, you know, typically FAQs, I think, from a lot of residents. So, we do have Proposition 2.5 in the state, which caps us from raising the levy beyond 2.5, so that means if you had a levy in one year that was $100, the next year you can't levy more or collect more taxes than $102.50. Of course, there's a but, and the but is new growth, because there's always a but, and so that's why, you know, you have potential to have taxes go up on a single home more than 2.5 percent, and that's probably the number one question we all get along the way, so I want to talk about that, and there's a third wrinkle to that that is material to tonight, which is that there may also be excess levy capacity, meaning unutilized tax levy from previous years, and in this year it's 1.1 percent, and this budget does utilize that 1.1. So, these are all playing a role in there. And finally, we have an interesting process where we pass the budget here in June, we don't set the tax rate until November, and a lot of residents ask, what does that exactly mean? And the answer is that once we decide on a total amount that we need to collect essentially to fund the city of Newburyport for the next year, it will then be divided by the total amount of assessed, and that will produce a tax rate, it's just simple math. But for my fellow colleagues here tonight, these are often looked at as two separate arguments, but they're really the same argument, so if we agree to this budget, or some form thereof, with or without amendment, we have to fund that in the fall, and the only fallback in this year's case will be any cuts that may be made tonight, or utilization of free cash, which many are familiar with and has been done in previous years. That's not to say whether something's good or bad, just to give you what the context is. And then finally, it's just, tonight's very simple for voting standards and so forth, it's a simple majority on pretty much everything, amendments is a simple majority, and then at the end of the evening, passing is a simple majority. I hope we don't have this question tonight, but yes, we essentially do have to act on the budget, because we are out of time in one of two ways, we are at the end of the fiscal year, but in addition, we are mandated to act on the proposed budget within 45 days of submission to the council, that's all charter-driven, and this pretty much takes us right up to that timeline, so don't anticipate that, but I wanted to mention. And then finally, a question that often comes up is what happens at the end of the night, if there are unallocated funds, basically if there are cuts that are successful, the answer is that one of three things can happen, they can be reallocated this evening, that's been done, they can be reallocated in the future via supplemental budget, or they can simply, for lack of a better way to say it, be left on the table, and that goes into that tax rate-setting discussion, which in November, if the levy doesn't have to be as high, because the total budget is less, then that excess essentially can be, go untaxed or not asked of the taxpayers. So that's what I wanted to offer, again, thank you to everybody, and I defer back to you, President, thank you for the time.
And I will say, thank you, Councillor Zee, for all the work you did, I know getting all these things scheduled in the last two months has been arduous at best, and I appreciate all the hard work you did.
Thank you.
So just so everyone appreciates how this works, what I'm going to do is we go page by page through the budget process, I do section by section, so if there's, for example, a department that has two pages, we'll just do each page, I ask that people do amendments, as Councillor Zee stated, we can only subtract, we cannot add, and as everything goes, it is a simple majority for any passing of an amendment, and the budget as well. So let's just get started. So we start with page 47, which is, we'll start with City Council. Councillor McCauley?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment on 51160, to change from 3.5 percent to 2.5 percent.
Second.
Discussion.
Reason for that, and this is a global type of situation throughout the entire budget, the administration has proposed a 3.5 percent COLA, and this is represented here, and will be represented through every department that goes on. When the budget was submitted roughly eight weeks ago, we had a different economic outlook, we had everyone in the world telling us that inflation was transitory, and we weren't going to face a recession, and now, as of this weekend, we have.
I apologize, can you unmute your microphone? Yep, thank you so much.
Thanks. So as of this weekend, we have most of the consensus saying that we will have a recession, and we are looking at no growth, or limited growth, or constrained growth. The Fed has taken steps to say they're going to 2 percent inflation, which means they'll cut jobs, which means they'll cut, they'll raise interest rates, et cetera, along the way. I think that we should, in combination of what was said previously, we should take into account that this is the tax rate that we're going to go forward with next year, we are going to have residents that are facing an income tax, excuse me, a real estate tax rate increase, they're also going to be facing a CPA increase, because the assessments will up 8.5 percent, and they're facing a water increase going forward. So the $311 is probably going to be closer to 500 or so on an increase for our taxpayers, and I think that we should consider that as we go forward. Thank you.
And Councillor, Councillor Zee, did you have your hand up?
Not yet, thank you.
Councillor Khan?
Thank you, Council President, I will not be supporting that cut, I think your work is only as good as your people, and while we have heard about the recession issue, we've also heard about the retention of people, and to me, I will probably going forward not support any of the cuts from 3.5 to 2.5. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Khan, further discussion? Councillor Vogel?
Yes, thank you, Council President, I will follow on by saying the same thing, I don't believe that these really, what are very small changes are going to affect the budget overall, I'm not sure about the predictions that were stated by the amending councillor, so I won't support any of those cuts along those lines either.
Thank you, Councillor Vogel. Councillor Zee?
Yeah, I just want to rise in support of this amendment, these are always difficult discussions, and this isn't the first year where salaries have come up, and I'm not blind to the fact that these are real people, but my attitude is, first of all, I do share the economic outlook stated by the councillor making the amendment, I am very concerned about where we are going to be in a year, as it relates to a variety of things, but especially things like state aid and other things that really help us balance our budget, such as building permits and other things that are really heavily dependent on interest rates. So, I think it's a real seesaw here, and it's a challenge to try and balance these things out, but in the end, my overall view is it's better to make smaller changes now than to go further down the road and then have to make more substantial changes, like actually not having certain people, or having, not having certain positions. So it's painful now, it's painful then, but I think that, you know, it's sort of like an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, as the old saying goes, and so many cuts don't add up to a lot individually, nominally, but over the course of a budget can make a difference, and can put us in a different footing, which is something that I'm very much in favor of, so, thank you.
Councillor Zee, further discussion?
All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Is it roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call to reduce to 2.5 percent. Correct, President? Councillor Donahue?
No.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
No.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
No.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, any further discussion on City Council? All right, Clerks, City Clerk's Department. Seeing no hands, moving on to page 48, Board of Registars. Seeing no hands, page 49, the Parking Clerk. Councillor Zee?
Motion to cut 52406, which is Parking, Maintenance, Waterfront, from what is proposed to be 20,000, down to 15,000.
Second.
Councillor Zee?
Thank you. So this has been something we talked about quite a bit throughout the budget, which is seeking to get clarity on where we're headed with the waterfront, and the relationship between the city and the waterfront trust, particularly financially, there are also some other nexus's between, you know, which departments and so forth are managing which pieces of property, but probably by and large, the biggest question or concern I have is we're on the precipice potentially of moving forward on the waterfront park, and this, these agreements were, have been considered for many years to be central to the conclusion of that, and in fact, even the potential ownership of that property. So if you'll recall, back to the 2018 ad hoc, there were notes in there that the waterfront trust would eventually take custody of the waterfront park, much debated, by the way, it wasn't exactly considered a given, so is it really the $5,000 in part, but it's more about trying to get the message that this is proliferating out across various departments, and we need to get a real grip on it, especially if we're going to move forward on a three-plus million dollar endeavor, and that's just this phase in terms of getting control of it, so we don't end up with something that we are not in a position to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Zee, further discussion? All right. Roll call.
Roll call to reduce 42406 to 15,000. Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Further amendments on page 49, Councillor Zee?
Motion to cut 52702 by 36K.
Second.
So, you know, I don't want to take up too much time, we've had a little bit of debate on this, but I think you're getting to see the potential impact of the additional lot lease here in the budget, and it obviously sticks out as a fairly large number, a 450 percent increase, this is primarily, this is, not primarily, it is for the potential lease at the, at the Daily News building that we talked about a little bit, and I think, again, you get to see it here a little bit more clearly about how sort of large it is compared to our existing leases. I understand that that agreement hasn't yet moved forward or finalized at this point, if it does, then I think it would be a good opportunity for supplemental or for a transfer from the Parking Fund if, and then we can have a debate about it at that time, either under the same terms or not, but at this time, it makes sense to remove it.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what the reduction was?
The number, sorry, the number?
Yes.
52702?
Yep.
Cut is 36K?
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion, questions? Councillor Wallace?
Can you just sit down one more time? Just to cut the whole.
So bring it to eight.
Return it back to where it was.
Cut to 30.
The reduction is, yeah, thank you.
Councillor McCauley?
Thank you, Council President, I will support this, I think this is a perfect use of a supplemental budget coming in, this is a, it's on the table, to be negotiated, but, you know, we have to put pencils down, this is not quite done yet, and so I would support it as a supplemental coming in, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCauley, further discussion or questions? All right?
I'm not 100 percent clear on what we're cutting.
If I might, it's that line item, which has an increase to 20,000.
It has an increase to 44,000.
Now, to 44,000. 44.
From 8,000, an increase of 36,000, it's to reduce it back to eight. Am I correct, Councillor Zee?
Correct. That's correct.
She needs the number.
52702 is the line item.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No further discussion, I'm going to go.
All right, roll call.
Roll call, starting with you, Councillor Donahue.
No.
No? Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zee?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Anything else on page 49? All right, moving right along, to Mayor's Office. Page 59.
Motion to cut 53801 by 28K.
Second.
Councillor Zee?
So it's quite a lot in this line item, I think, that could be discussed, some of it we did tackle in committee, but long story short is that, first, I have a couple, one is a broad theme that was discussed in committee, and that's the concept of new hires, and part of this is essentially establishing another part-time position that doesn't exist today, and so for that reason alone, I don't support it, I think, again, as the Ward 5 councillor stated, he had some broader thoughts, I did too, and probably my most overarching one is that now is not the time to be creating new hires, it just isn't the right time to be bringing people on. In terms of defending the actual number of 28,000, that is in part because of the information received from the administration, which did answer questions about it, and it was in part a stipend for that new position, that new hire, and then another part was for basically a consultant, I think, so that totaled up to 28K, if everybody had a chance to read that email or read that information. I want to note that by cutting this 28, it still leaves an increase of $2,000, because the increase proposed was 30, and that's still a 10 percent increase for this line, which outpaces most, if not all, departments, you know, across, so it's not exactly keeping it flat, but I think it's keeping it more in concert. The last piece I want to mention is that, again, in reading some of the information provided, there's a tremendous amount of crossover, I think, between HR and some of the things that are being done in there, and I think that that's sort of an evolving area that has to be determined, what should be reasonably expected out of HR versus what do you need to bring consultants in, I also think there's overlap, if that's the right word, between various departments, such as the schools and other groups that are taking on similar initiatives, so I'm urging the council to take 28K from here for that purpose, leave what is still a pretty healthy increase, in my opinion, 10 percent, and then, you know, maybe that can be done, some things could be done by one-time transfer, if that's what's deemed, and would also offer more transparency in this area, which has been a bit of a challenge at times, so those are my, those are my thoughts, thank you.
Councillor Zee, further discussion? Councillor Khan?
Thank you, Council President, I will not be supporting that cut, I don't know how much people have been following what the DEI alliance has been doing, and the one thing I would recommend, as city councillors, we could ask about any ad hoc or any group that's formed by the mayor, and that's how we get answers, that's how we get the questions that we want to ask done, to do it around budget time without really even knowing what this group has been doing seems a little bit like a shot in the dark, it's like we don't, I think the worst problem here is the fact that there's a letters DEI, maybe if it was called something else, maybe it wouldn't viscerally have a reaction with people, but the one thing I will say is, you know, there is a webpage dedicated to this group that if you were to go visit it, you could see what they've been doing, and there's regular meetings, there's community conversations, every councillor here has been invited to those community conversations, I know in the past I have attended some of them, very poor attendance, but let me just kind of tell you, you know, we're not, you know, I think I heard not in favor of new positions, there is a new position here, the manager of special projects, we are looking at the value of these positions, and I do see a value in some of the roles created here, as well as the DEI initiative item, mainly because what the ask is, yeah, different departments might have some elements of what one perceives to be the same as what's here, but if you read the mission statement, go look at what some of the conversations have been, that is not being discussed, there was a real need for this, and for us to cut it down, and so what basically you have is, it started off with an amount, a small amount, because we didn't know how much is needed. You have about 11 community members, Daily News article, looking for members from the community to be part of it, they sent in resumes, it was a well-formed, and actually more than most groups in the city, very, very transparently formed, now in terms of what they're doing, the emails and the names of everyone is on that webpage, people could go ask, and so to actually, after they've spent time together, to recognize what it costs, it's not cheap to get the expertise that we need from outside sources to look and see what some of the issues have been, that we're all just trying to brush away, maybe they didn't happen, I know they did happen, and they continue to be happening, but the purpose here is to really look at it with city people, as well as community people, and then bringing in the facilitation needed from outside to really help shape and make it move forward collectively, looking across the whole city. The one thing I will, I will acknowledge is, I do wish that we had some type of a annual report, or some type of report to the council, and that's what I would recommend, that that happened, that we don't cut this, but instead, let's really ask that they highlight what they did, I happen to know what they did, because I know people on it, but if others don't know that, that's not transparent, and I think that, that might help, what people are now perceiving as a line item that doesn't make sense, is maybe we need, and I am going to ask the councillor that is on the alliance, so there is a councillor that's part of the alliance, is that we do get that, and so that folks could really appreciate what has been coming from the time spent by this group. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Khan, further discussion? Councillor McCauley?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to ask if the sponsoring council would take a friendly amendment to adjust it to $18,000. Okay. Okay, thank you, and if I may, Council President, so the reason I did that is that is the amount of the stipend, based upon the information. So first of all, I'm not having a visceral reaction to DEI, what I'm having is an organizational structure here, and I, and I do believe that there is some overlap, and I do believe that the work done by DEI is important work, and I do think that reaching within the community and outside of the community is very important, but this is an HR function, throughout the world, HR functions are changing into people organizations, and the things that they focus on are ESG and DEI initiatives, my company is at the forefront of that, and, and so I'm very well aware of these types of initiatives, I participate in them, of the 100 people that work for me, I make sure that they participate in them, and all of that, it's very important work. The issue here is that where it sits and where it locates, I brought it up the other night, the person, the resource identified sits in NYSS, and this is not, this is not a youth services function, this is a people function, this is an adult function, this is a hiring practice function, this is how we become as a community more inclusive, so the DEI alliance, which isn't really an organization per se under our charter, doesn't have oversight, it doesn't have, its members aren't vetted by the City Council, it's an advisory committee that was set up by the mayor, right, and, and again, I'm not talking about any of the work they do, for one, I've never been invited to attend a meeting in the time that I've been here, but that's just me, so what I'm trying to get to here is I think that I have asked the administration to think about putting this position within HR, and not put the position within NYSS, and this is the message that I think that we need to send in just taking the 18,000 off the table, and saying, listen, we think the policies are good, the initiatives are great, but we don't think that it's the right place to put it, in NYSS, and we think we should put it in HR, it's not our purview to add to HR, but we think that that's where it should go. Thank you.
Councillor McCauley, Councillor Preston?
So I just have a point of clarity, so your friendly amendment is for the total line item to be $32,000, so taking 18 out, not 18 total?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Further discussions or questions? Councillor Cameron and Councillor Zee?
Thank you, President, yeah, I'm going to oppose this amendment, I think this is an important issue, the Mayor's Office originally went in for a corporal position rather than the $18,000 stipend, I know many members of the community don't think this is something we should be doing regardless of where it's located, I however, based on my conversations with a range of community members, think it is something that's important for Newburyport, you know, and we can talk about what the future's going to be like in terms of possible recessions, impact on tax revenues, et cetera, but we know that we're in, you know, in a place in our country where we need to have these conversations, you know, this is in the Mayor's Office budget, I, you know, I appreciate Councillor McCauley's comments about where this should lie, whether that's in HR, my understanding is that the person who would be receiving the stipend for this additional work on top of their regular job does work for NYSS, but it sounds to me that the DEI work would cut across the whole of But it sounds to me that the DEI work would cut across the whole of the city. And the other piece that is funded here for $10,000 for an HR contractor to work on these issues, that would apply to the whole city. So, I think leaving the structure up to the mayor's office to figure out, we're here to approve a budget and sort of the general guidelines on it, and I'm in support of that amount of money. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron, Counsel Zede, and then Counsel Vogel.
I've already spoken. If you have.
Thank you. I'm going to stand opposed to the cut as well. I think that the NYSS or the Newburyport Youth Services Department is very, 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 very much in tune with the community, not only in tune with the youth of the community, but it filters on up to the parents and a big, a broader spectrum. I'm not sure where the HR department would be in terms of meeting people on a regular basis and conducting business on a regular basis with the outside world, as it may be. So, I'm going to stand opposed. I think that, I think that this is a great initiative, and I would like to see it continue forward even further. Thank you.
Further discussion. Seeing no more, now Counsel Zede.
Go ahead. I just wanted to respond to one comment, and that's about, you know, what is the validity of acting through the budget? So, I mean, I just want to say that I feel very strongly that this is exactly where the rubber meets the road, on any issue. And so, acting through the budget is perfectly a sensible thing to do. And with due respect to the body, we did turn down several opportunities to have a conversation about various things. And one thing I said on the floor at that time was that it would come up during budget. And it's coming up during budget, because this is specifically funding something. There are a lot of questions about it. And so, we can argue about, you know, I think it's good, I think it's bad. I think there's actually much more broader things about the organizational structure that are actually more important to me personally, but there are a variety of things going on. And so, I just, this is where the rubber meets the road. Some say this is one of three things that we do on the council, and it is important, and it is a way to impact where the city is headed.
Thank you, Counsel Zede. Counsel McCauley and Counsel Preston.
I'll yield. I've spoken.
I was just going to stand in actually favor of the amendment. I, you know, I think the initiatives are extremely important, and I would like to be able to put the resource toward this, but given the state of the economy, I do feel like that the coordination of the activities could be absorbed elsewhere in the administration. So, I'm in favor of the amendment.
Counsel McCauley.
Thank you, Counsel President. I just want to clarify against, about some comments that were made about where this should go, right? And I'm looking at the detail provided to us by the administration. The work that is proposed are making our hiring practices and job descriptions more inclusive, employee, city employee training and community organization. Those clearly are not within a youth services function, and that's been my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussion? All right, so the friendly amendment, I'm sorry, Counsel Con.
Sorry, thank you, Counsel President. I mean, I, can I ask the administration a question?
Certainly.
Because I keep hearing that folks think this is, that the person that's being tapped into it happens to come from doing things at youth services. But I just want clarification if that, because this is under the mayor's office, and I keep hearing that it's a youth services function. It's not. So, can you clarify that, please?
Would you comment, please?
So, while this person works for youth services for these responsibilities, since they would be funded by the mayor's office, they would be accountable to the mayor's office, reporting to them, and this would be driven through the mayor's office with whoever this stipended person is? Is that the answer to the question?
Yeah, just to follow up. So, there is no, so the youth services department doesn't run this group, if I'm understanding. So, it's really, the mayor's on the committee, and then a citizen group that's, that's kind of moderated, or the person that's running it is Tina Loos, who's just happens to be someone who's also assisting with youth services. So, I just want to make that absolutely clear. So, this is a administration-run function or group, like any other ad hoc.
That is correct.
Great, thank you.
Counsel Lang.
One more thing. So, the personality works for NYSS as well?
This person works for NYSS, their current role, they also have a stipend in which they're coordinating DEI. This would move their responsibilities to be more DEI work and would have less responsibilities through the grant-funded portion of their salary that goes through NYSS.
So, essentially, they have two jobs in the city?
They would still have one job with the city, and they would be a shifting of their responsibilities. They would take about, I think in the breakdown I sent to the council, it would be about six to seven hours fewer on their grant-funded responsibilities through NYSS, shift those over to the DEI position, six, seven hours a week.
So, again, there's a discrepancy then, because it's, if the job description doesn't fit what this person's doing, and they work for another department, I see that as a blending of the two. I can perfectly see where that makes some people uneasy about the budget, that they're going to be taking on two roles with two departments. So, are we going to have a separate, we're not going to have a separate person in the mayor's office. This person essentially is already an employee of NYSS, correct?
I think I've been consistent in saying.
Yes.
So, I sent around today, you know, what their hours breakdown would be. Some of those hours are in the mayor's office, some of those hours are in NYSS. It's something that happens quite often in many positions.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. Actually, that's a very common structure. So, for example, I could give a few right now, if you were to look in the budget books, the, our city clerk, who wears many hats, and the salaries come from different departments, as in between water, sewer, there's several examples. In the budget book, you'll see that, where they'll say this percent here at the very end. So, it's not uncommon. We do that right now, just so, want folks to know that.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes, thank you. So, will the administration be proactively reducing the NYSS budget by the same amount of the stipend?
That'll be unnecessary in this book, because it comes from grant-funded sources. The amount that we'll be cutting down is from grant-funded sources, which we'll be able to see in the grant reports that are sent to us.
Counsel Wallace.
Sure, I have a question for Andrew here. Could you just break down the categories of what you sent out to us, or maybe everybody here with the funding, you said this much for this and this and this?
Sure. I should have printed that out, but I believe it's, I think what I said today, Counsel Zede has it in front of him. Thank you, Counsel Zede.
May I read it? Just 18,000 stipend, DEI coordinator, 10,000 HR contractor, 17,000 training, $5,000 programming materials and other support. Read verbatim from the thing.
Counsel Wallace.
Just follow. And just to clarify, one more time. So, your, Counsel McCauley's amendment, friendly amendment, you, that would be a total of 32 to cover, is that correct, 32?
Everything but the stipend.
Everything but the stipend.
Yes.
Initiatives stay, the stipend go.
Yes.
Thank you.
Initiative stays.
Further questions? Counsel Vogel.
If I may direct it to the chief of staff, if I may. So, San's $18,000. Who would do that work?
I do not know.
Thank you.
What's 18,000? I'm sorry, I missed.
Stipend. If we cut the stipend, who does the work?
Further questions? All right, so as it stands right now, the amendment that's, we're going to vote on is reducing it to by 18,000.
Correct.
Line item 53801.
Correct.
Roll call.
So, on the reduction of by $18,000, Counsel Adonio.
No.
Counsel Con.
No.
Counsel Lang.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel Preston.
Yes.
Counsel Vogel.
No.
Counsel Wallace.
No.
Counsel Wright.
Yes.
Counsel Zede.
Yes.
Counsel Cameron.
No.
Counsel Shan.
No.
Motion fails. Five, six.
All right. Further items in the mayor's budget?
All right, well, this, I'll follow up with this one. So, I'd like to take a look at 51120. And I would like to reduce that by the 8154, and I'm sorry that I say that, actually. But my concern here is this, and I underst-
We need a second.
You make a motion?
Oh, motion to reduce 51120 by 8154.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for the, so, here's my concern. I understand the procedure of bringing in someone new when you have a new administration and you have to bring somebody on. In this particular case, as we go along, we've been in business essentially for, you know, six months, and this particular person's been in business for about five months. And I recognize that an offer was made to the person and so on and so forth. The difficulty that I have is that right out of the gate, there's an $8,154 raise. I would have really have liked to have seen this person come in on level funded, as we were last year, and I understand the marketplace has changed and all of that. But there's a learning curve. There's a learning curve with this person, there's a learning curve with the whole administration. And as things go along, I think as understandings come to be, perhaps we could have taken another look at this in the fall and seen where we were at. And that's what, that's the way that I would have liked to have seen it happen. But just, there's another line item in here as well, I'd like to talk about in a bit. But I'll start with this. I'd like to see this be level funded to the amount of the previous administration's chief of staff. And then, perhaps as we go along and we see the building of experience and the building of understanding, perhaps there's an opportunity then to provide larger funds or more funds.
Counsel Preston.
I have a question through the chair to the administration.
Sure.
Is this, this is contractual, yes?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yes. If you want us to come a little-
That's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think you can.
Since it's his position.
Yes, it is.
It is contractual. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Cameron, then Counsel Vogel.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to oppose this amendment, and I know, for those of, for those of you not in government, it's a little awkward to talk about people, positions and salaries. But I will say generally, you know, my, my segment of the world, yeah, as Counsel Vogel said, you know, it's a different market now, regardless of the person in the position, who I do think is doing a fine job. You know, if this negotiation happened through the mayor's office, I do not think that's an unreasonable salary at all. And we, you know, you can, I don't know how exactly, all of the city hall's doing in terms of vacancies, but I know in many places in government, certainly in nonprofit and for-profit service industry and lots of industries, and I've had several conversations with some of my council colleagues about their other lives, there's major staff problems, staffing problems, and I think we need to compensate people fairly. People work hard, we have high expectations and transparent expectations on them, so I see no need to support this.
So, Counsel Zede had not spoken yet, and then I'll come back to Counsel Vogel.
Thank you. I just wanted to address a structural piece that's really important to me. So, with due respect to the response, it's not contractual. So, you have a chicken or the egg problem here, okay? The mayor's office cannot go out and negotiate contracts with anybody and then come to the council and say it's contractual. It's contractual once it's funded, once it's appropriated. There's this magical phrase called "subject to appropriation." So, you can't do an end run around appropriation by simply creating a contract. This is why I say it's a chicken or the egg problem. So, when a, when any administration and previous administration used to do this too, when you bring in somebody mid-year utilizing free funds that existed, you do so at the peril that you have to come to the council, and it may not catch up with you until the next fiscal year, but that, so, I just, that is really important to me, that there's a foundational thing there. If taken to a logical extreme, that means the city council means nothing in the process. If contracts can simply be negotiated pre-budget, and then you come in and say it's contractual, there's nothing you can do about it. I'm not commenting yet on the merits of this, but I just want to be very clear about my understanding, and this is my seventh budget, so, thank you.
Counsel Zede, further, just Counsel Vogel.
Well, I just, thank you. That was my understanding as well, and I thank you very much for that clarification. I also really want to put out there, none of this is personal. And again, as my fellow counselor-at-large suggested, these, this is difficult. These are difficult conversations. But our job is to look at this budget, our job is to analyze it, and our job is to make the recommendations as we feel are appropriate. You know, I may not ever be allowed back in City Hall, but, you know, if that be the case, I stand by my amendment, and we'll see where that goes. But thank you for the clarification on that.
Counsel Zede.
Counsel Wallace. I am not going to support the cut. I do think this is a very important position. I mean, it'd be nice to have a chief of staff that sticks around for more than two years. I mean, there tends to be a turnover in this job, but it's, they're also almost playing a role like a town manager or a town administrator, and they make a lot more money. So, in the city, it's kind of different, but I think it's a- Oh, there we go. It was, it was all good stuff. So, I just think this is a very important position. The city wants to retain good people, and I will not be supporting the cut. Thank you.
Counsel Con, then Counsel Vogel, Counsel Zede.
I think Counsel Zede was first.
Nope. You haven't spoken yet.
Oh, you have, okay. Great. Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I won't support this. I said it before, and it might be my mantra, is we can only be as good as our people. And we have had time to see the people that are here and work with them, and I take that very close to heart, and I want to retain. And we, we kind of went down this road maybe three or four years ago with other chief of staffs, not being able to keep that position. There's a lot being asked of them. We have a lot of things going on in this city. So, I support what my fellow counselor from Ward Four just said, and I totally would like to see this not touched. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Zede.
Yeah, I understand the, I'm just going to say this, with due respect to this sponsoring counselor, zero is probably a little bit too austere, and maybe as a friendly suggestion, try 3.5%, which is what's been decided as sort of the standard COLA for this year, if he wishes to consider that. Are you asking? Yes.
Yes.
And I didn't do the math fast enough. Ethan can do it faster than me.
Oh, sure. Yes. Sorry.
Somebody want to do that math? I got a D in algebra.
That's all right. We have, we have.
I'll ask you.
So, just to clarify, what's in the budget is a 3.5% increase?
Right.
For the person in the position? So, if you're proposing 3.5, it's unclear, are you agreeing with the proposal or?
So, instead of keeping it level from 9550, which was the recommendation, 9550 plus 3.5%, and the rest becomes the cut. Do you understand? So, it's going up by 9%.
So, 93,000, 719.
That's the middle of the two. Does that make sense?
So, 3.5% increase.
I said 3.5% increase.
Correct.
Over the former, on the former employees' pay.
That's right.
Further discussion? All right, so, roll call on only having a 3.5%, which takes it to a proposed number of 92, 79- 93, 719.
93.
719.
719. The line 51120. Roll call?
Roll call. Roll call.
Everyone know what we're voting on? It's to increase it by 3.5%.
Yep.
Over the 90.
Instead of 9%.
Yes, I mean, in real figures, 93, 719, instead of the proposed 98, 703.
Correct.
Correct.
Counselor Donahue?
Just a point of clarity, we're voting on the amendment?
Yes, that's the only thing on the floor.
Okay, you did switch for the cut.
Switch for the cut?
It's for a cut. That's the amendment.
Yeah.
Amendment is the cut.
So, shall I repeat?
Please.
Yes. So the motion is to amend that line item, instead of the proposed 98, 703, to go to 93, 719, and that represents a 3.5% increase over last year's 90, 550. Correct. Ethan?
Correct.
If I can just add up, I think the way that's helpful to think about this, so essentially, and my math's a little off, but essentially, instead of the cut of 8,154 that the counselor had offered as an amendment, the cut would be $5,000-ish.
The increase would be $5,000 from last year.
No.
81 is not a cut, it's, it's the change.
Yeah, it's.
The proposed FY '23 budget is 98,703.
Correct.
And I believe.
So the cut is $4,983.75.
Correct, correct.
Now you got it.
So that's what the cut is.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Well done.
Can I speak to this?
Sure, Counselor Lane.
I, I'm opposed to changing this at all. I'm gonna reiterate what the Ward 4 counselor said, when you get good people, you retain them. This is just bad, this looks bad. This is awful. Like, cutting down the salary by $3,000 when you support multimillion-dollar changes within our city at the same time, what's, what's the purpose here? Why? What does it make, does it make any sense to do that to a good employee? Again, I'm a hard no on this.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. All right, so, back to the roll call vote.
This is the roll call to, as previously described. Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
No?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel? Yes. Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zead?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, further items from the mayor's budget? Counselor Vogel?
I'm gonna change the license plate on my car. What's that? I'd like to, I'd like to amend. Let's, let's go right to 51, 501, the mayor's travel allowance. I'd like to reduce that, I'd like to reduce that to $5,100. I'd like to reduce that to zero.
Point of clarity? So that the total line item would be zero?
The change.
So the change would.
The change.
So the total line item would go to 5101.
Would be five. 5100.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Thank you. So this is a stipend. This is, relates to the other union, our unions on the property, where there's around 400 and some odd dollars every month for travel expenses. And, you know, $5,100 buys you, you know, 1,000 gallons worth of gasoline, and whatever else you might want to do with it. In years past, or in, in administrations past, there's a pretty discretionary line, there's no accounting for it, you can do whatever you want with it. It's money in your pocket, you can use it for gasoline, you can take a vacation with it, you can do whatever with it you want. Previous administrations has used that money to help us as city councilors, to go to different meetings, the MMA comes to mind, such as that. Again, I just don't understand how we can, you know, the, the point here is that, that 10,200 will be split, you know, in the, in the, in the lines, on the, in the, in payment, it's 5100 to the chief of staff, and it's $5,100 to the mayor. And so that's how it's paid, and it's taxed, and it's, you know, all accounted for in that way, but it is cash in the pocket. I would, I would rather see, I would like to see this line actually kind of go back to where it was in the very beginning, when I first become a city counselor, that this money was asked for or tracked, but that has changed. So I would just, I just, I don't see where we need another $5,100 going into somebody's pocket, and I, again, I'll change my license plate, you don't know when I'm around town. But this is our job, is to take a look, a hard look at this, and that's my hard look.
Further discussion?
That was seconded by.
Counselor, we discussed it. Counselor Lane?
I'm gonna oppose this. Just because the price of gas has gone up four times since last year, since we voted on the $5,100, I've already seen the mayor travel to various things. I don't see any purpose in cutting this one bit. It's gonna cost more to travel, and he needs to travel to do his job. So I'm gonna oppose this.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I just want to clarify, this is for travel for both the mayor and the chief of staff, right? So it's not just the mayor, so chief of staff and they're equal, 5,100, 5,100. Okay, great, thank you.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so, I don't like travel allowances. I don't like them in contracts, I don't like them anywhere along the way. I've always stated it, right? And I'd rather have people submit tickets and reimbursements for these things. It roughly equates to, depending if it's 30 days or 20 days, somewhere between 22 miles or 34 miles a month that somebody's driving along the city. We exclude commuting to and from work, because that's not covered. It is, you know, it is part of this as you do it, which is why I don't like it. And this is, this would be city business. So I'd only, I'd only oppose it if we oppose it everywhere in the city on a global level, and we get rid of all travel allowances. Thank you.
Counselor Wallace has yet to speak, and then I'll come back to Counsel Vogel.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I have so many more questions now, and maybe I missed this discussion in the, in the meetings, but I, I agree with Counselor McCauley. I mean, I'm used to, in my previous work, you know, submitting expense reports and things like that, which can be, you know, a pain, but if this is truly just cash in people's pocket, and maybe that's an exaggeration, that kind of surprises me a little bit. But now I don't, if this was part of the contracts, I know this stuff does get kind of negotiated. But the other thing to keep in mind here too, and of course, of course we want the mayor to be able to travel, and we want the chief of staff, all staff to be able to travel, but also with Zoom, I would imagine there's a lot less travel that's happening. So, I mean, maybe not for this year, but some sort of accountability or understanding what people are actually spending would be helpful. I mean, I have no idea if this is even close to what it may be. And I, and I understand gas is expensive as well, but that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wallace. Counselor Zead?
Yeah, thank you. My broad comment is that this is, it just, it's been such, it's so difficult to unwind some of these things, to understand them. And I think, to be blunt, travel allowances are essentially an extension of salary, is the way that they're treated, they're simply paid, they're just paid. So they become part of that, but they get broken out into more lines. Some could argue it's more transparent, because you see it's a travel allowance. Other could argue that, you know, you're really, you're increasing somebody's salary just by nature of doing it. And there, there are some positions that really, you know, do travel just in the course of doing the job, that isn't the commute, which everybody knows the IRS doesn't allow you to deduct your commute. But you have folks maybe that go around town and do inspections, for example, they're, they're literally traveling for that purpose, and you have this, and a lot in the physical departments that we have that have to go places. Some of them have fleets of vehicles, some don't. Some will recall three or four years ago in a budget, we had a long discussion about having a fleet, a shared fleet, where the city would have three or four vehicles that were sort of lived here, and some, anybody could take the keys that needed them to use, and that's a city vehicle now instead of a personal vehicle. But the broader theme that I want to mention is, this is the challenge when you have grants and you have stipends and you have travel allowances and you have side agreements, and then you have utilization within lines that's very difficult for the council to be able to follow, is that, that's some of the challenge. And that's, in fact, that report that was referenced earlier about people paid for multiple lines, that's why that was created, because people were trying to figure out, follow the money, where, where's everything coming from. Doesn't mean it's good or it's bad, it could be completely justifiable, but just to be able to follow it. The last thing is to just address something that a counselor brought up about, what's the point, right? What's the point of some of these things? The point is, is that over time, this, this is where, when people ask me, when I'm walking down, where does the money go? The answer is always people. That's always the answer. The city is a people machine, so it's got lots of people across various departments. And these are the kinds of things that basically, once you take on that, that's why I'm so hard on the new hires, because once you bring them on, you're essentially, you're saying we're gonna have them for a long time. People look to municipalities for stability, they expect a position to expect to exist year over year. The same thing goes with raises. So next year, the base becomes X percent higher, and then you're building off of that. And so people are always like, well, I don't understand, doesn't the city have a ton of money? And the answer's no, I mean, it's right here, you can go through it and look for yourself. But that's the reason we have these discussions, and in some ways, as I've often said in previous budgets, the operating money is the gold, and, and the one-time money is the silver. So you have to think about it that way, because, again, you're making commitment. You're gonna come up with it this year, you gotta come up with it next year, plus, then the next year, plus on top of that. And if you don't think a couple $3,000 can compound, you know, look at it, the schedule over 10 years, it's, it's amazing how fast it grows.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you. So I'd like to respond to a couple of those things. First, to the last counselor's comments about how this escalates over years, that's exactly right. And that, that's why I stand and, and raise the issue, because next year, that $10,200 will be $12,000, and it just kind of goes on and on and on. In terms of the contractual pieces, this is not a contractual item. It is contractual in other parts of the book. You know, again, we only have control over what, just about the discretionary spending, which is, represents somewhere around, what, 10, 15% of our budget, and everything else, we don't really have any control over. And that's one of the lines we don't have control over further on in the book. When it's a contractual item, we can't cut travel allowance, and it's done in the same way. Here, this is a negotiated number, that was negotiated with the mayor and, and the chief of staff, and I'm concerned about it becoming just, again, more pay, and down, and next year, it'll be more pay, and it's not accountable. I would love to see travel allowances back again. When I first started becoming, when I was first city counselor, it was very convoluted, which is why it went this way, is because it was hard to keep, it was hard to understand who needed to pay for what. So it kind of fell to this. But I, you know, here I stand, and I'd like to urge my fellow counselors to support that change.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to reduce it by $5,100.
Right.
Roll call.
So Counsel Donahue?
No.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel? Yes. Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zead?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-5.
Further comments on this page?
I have one more. I had a, oh, go ahead. Sorry, that passed, that didn't, was that a yes or a no?
So the amendment passed, so the cut was made. All right, further discussion? I mean, sorry, further amendments. Counselor Vogel?
I have one more. And then I'll walk home. I have difficulty with 51122. I do not have difficulty at all with the person, I have difficulty with the position. And I would like to amend and have the 44, 108 reduced to zero. Oh, wow, okay. Okay, thank you. So this position, I think I stated it, I think I was on Zoom, I probably couldn't have been heard very well, but I stated it at the time, that this position kind of came out of the blue. And in the lead-up to the election, there were some discussions about an economic development person. I also believe that there are other departments in, in the city, namely, I mean, I think we could, you know, go like this, we could go DPS, we could go the planning department. We could certainly use, if we're gonna use, create a new position, we could certainly use a sustainability engineer, somebody that could really look at our resiliency and, rather not sustainability, but our resiliency. And we really do need to plan for the future in that. As I, as I look, and, and as I look at the description of this person, I, I, I'm a little unclear as to why another position such as this exists in the mayor's office. Some of the, some of the statements in the, in the job description, and again, this is not a reflection of the person that's involved, and I'm, and I'm really sorry to be standing here to do this, but I got a lot of feedback on this from a lot of people. But some of the, some of the, some of the provisions of the, of the job description provides guidance to various department heads. To me, that sounds like a mayor's job. The position all provides supervision of contractors and consultants working for the city in complex projects. Well, we have people like that, we have at least one person, if not two people like that, in the planning department, and we have the mayor. Consensus building with department heads, city councilors, including but not limited to waterfront use, adaptive use, all of these, Brown School, Bartlett Mall, Market Square Landing, all of these things are broad city issues that, in my opinion, are managed by the mayor. I, I don't understand why there's another layer, if you will. Development of strategic and long-term planning in conjunction with the chief of staff and the mayor prioritize those projects, provide assistance in identifying the ways to continue to support or bolster both economic and, I mean, this is so broad. Identify means a streamlining processes, identify outside, outside sources of funding, don't we, we have a, we have a grant writer, assist in the process of the budget, I get that. It seems like a duplication of efforts, and, and a lot of, lot of crossover in those efforts. I, I would like to see that particular position, or if we need another position, I'd like to see it vetted further through, through City Hall, through the departments, where is a position that has a lot of these, these functions? Where does that fit best? Wherever it may be. Or maybe we go back to what we were talking about earlier, where this person does numerous things across the board. But to sit in the mayor's office or to be in the mayor's office, a new position that has responsibilities and definitions of what they're doing, that crosses over clearly into what I believe is a higher level of the mayor's position, I just don't see it. And again, what's gonna happen next year? Is that gonna still be a half-time, $44,000 job? Or is that going to now become a three-quarter or a full-time job? And now we have, you know, three fairly large salaries in the mayor's office. This is unprecedented, I haven't seen this happen in all my time on city council, to have another high-paying job brought into the mayor's office. And I'd like to urge you to support this, but let's, let's go back, all for, for having conversations. Thank you. What?
Counselor Khan, then Counselor Wallace, then Counselor Cameron, then Counselor Lane.
Great. Thank you, Council President. So I, I feel like, you know, I appreciate the intent, I'm not, I, I think it's fair for us to, to question and ask, and, and we are seeing changes here, and I think that's what we're probably discussing. I am in favor of this, but I wasn't initially. So I had to come around to rethinking, maybe where we have a lot of projects being done that we need to have some oversight and follow-through, that does involve multiple departments. The way we are currently structured, and in talking with departments, we know as counselors when these projects are before us, we listen to the responsible department head and the associated staff. However, we know, as we sat here, how maybe some things haven't moved, or sometimes questions may, there may be delays in understanding. And I believe that I'm really open to seeing this position and see what it could help us do, knowing that we have so many large things before, large projects, very, very detailed projects before us, that I feel like we have had a chance to get a little snippet of what we are already seeing in terms of that education, that presentation to the council, we've been getting updates regularly. I, and, and we know that the mayor's office has also commissioned the community paradigm study on optimizing city functions and the city departments, which they have even said they're eager to find those results, share it with us. It would be interesting to see where this position lies there as well, as we kind of think what's the optimal structure to get all these things done. So for now, I think I'd like to keep this, and I hope we do not cut it. And then from there on, see what are the optimal ways, given what this consultant's gonna do, and how does this position maybe work in that framework as well. Thank you.
Counselor Wallace?
Sure. I am very much in favor of keeping this position.
going to do, and how does this position maybe work in that framework as well. Thank you.
Councillor Wallace?
Sure. I am very much in favor of keeping this position. In fact, I would love to see a full-time position. I would like to see more project managers. We have an unprecedented amount of projects in front of this city. It's, it's really staggering. And you hear about it from residents, they want this, they want this, they want this. And it, it's, how do we actually get them done? And honestly, if you have a good project manager or a project manager, you plan, you look at different alternatives, it's going to save the city a lot of money upfront, like potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that you don't have to do something twice. These are big projects. So in the end, it's a big win for the city. And to me, it doesn't matter which department. I mean, it, Director Port had said that having this position helps them in the planning department a little bit. I know this position is also helping out engineering, because I think we need more project managers, because we want to do more roadwork, or I would. I, I think that's the, the goal, that, you know, residents want to see that kind of thing. And anything to keep them moving, have them be efficient, and to save the city money. And, and honestly, a lot of towns, if you, if you look in the municipal job ads, a lot of cities and towns are hiring project managers, whether it's in public works, planning, or directly under the mayor. This is very common. You're starting to see this a lot more. Because running a city is a big business, and, you know, the mayor needs help. I mean, I'm sure he would love to be able to manage everything, but the mayor shouldn't be managing projects. I mean, that's what project managers are for. So I support it, and I'd like to see more project managers. Thank you.
Councillor Wallace. Councillor Cameron?
Thank you, president. And I, I concur with everything that the Ward Four councillor just said. Just to add some extra layering on that, I mean, here's, here's the city org chart, which I know we've seen for many years. And, you know, to me, this, this doesn't add a layer of, of a barrier between the mayor and the projects and the department heads. This adds extra support and connection between the mayor and the department heads. You know, I've heard, I've heard management gurus say that like the optimal level of, number of direct reports that, that any one manager would supervise is something like five, perhaps as many as seven. And, you know, the mayor has got many, many, many more than that. Some of our departments are grouped, you know, sort of cabinet-style, at least it is on paper, and we know that, you know, some of them do work more, more coherently together. But, you know, council on aging, veteran services, youth services, the library, parks, you know, some of the public safety, they're, they're kind of on their own. And so I think this helps to bring some extra support into the Ward Four councillor's point. There are so many projects, we get an amazing, you know, have had amazing outcomes over the last several years, and we've got some very complicated projects in the works right now that are really cross, cross-departmental. So I agree with what the sponsor of this amendment said, that there are other needs that we ought to be looking at, a sustainability engineer, maybe another position in, in, in planning, but we're not there. I also like that this is still only part-time. I, I probably would be arguing as well for it to be full-time, but I know we are, we are tight on money. So I think just, you know, I'm not going to support this amendment. I think this position makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councillor Lane. Thank you.
I agree with the past two councillors and what they've said. And to me, I look at this, and I, I don't think it's enough. I do think there is room for a full-time position. I wish we could add to this, actually. And I look at the past 10 years of what and how much money we've spent, and how much money we've lost by not having this position. We're tight on money now because this position doesn't exist. And to paraphrase, I trust this mayor in what he needs. And I've heard that in the past. I've heard people say those words in the past. So this drill, and I don't know what's going on here, but I trust what he needs, and I also trust that this project manager is going to save us a lot of money down the road. I yield for now.
Councillor Zede?
Thank you. So I, I have a couple of different thoughts. First of all, I have, I have real concerns and reservations over this position. When the position was announced, I, I made my thoughts known. I've been consistent. I'm, I'm a bit of a hawk, so I understand that, I have that. And, but I have slightly different concerns than the sponsoring councillor, and I want to express what those are. First of all, you know, most of the projects that were discussed as examples and samples of things fit exactly under the planning and development umbrella, in my humble opinion. So in other words, when we talk about basically being an internal OPM, owner's project manager that you would have on a large project, managing anything having to do with real estate development projects, and the projects that have been rattled off are all under that umbrella. So I don't have the same opinion as a sponsoring councillor that this is a, this is like the mayor's job. That's not exactly my feeling. My feeling is that there's a tremendous amount of crossover with planning and development. And I, I've been open about that, again, with the administration since the position was, was created. And so that is, that is, that's, that's basically it, to me, is, is the biggest challenge with that. The second one is, you know, it's just, it's, it's very difficult. Everybody keeps saying, okay, we want more positions, we want more full-time, we want all these things, but, but from where and how? And so these are the challenges that I'm facing. Where I'm going to come to a, a bit of a different conclusion is, I basically, I'm going to, you know, wave the white flag for a year. And I'm going to say, but I want to be upfront and public here stating that I'm highly unlikely to support the position next year. So if this is a transition position, which was discussed at the, at the early time when it was created, okay, it's a start. But if it's going to be made permanent, and maybe this is a step in that direction, and maybe I'm in the minority anyway, so it doesn't matter. But I think it would have to be accompanied by something that makes sense in terms of a restructure in the planning and development office that allows for something to make sense here. And everybody said it's not about the person, it certainly is, this is a structural governance thing. So again, what's the point? The point is, this sets us on a certain track. So certain councillors are, are indicating, okay, it's part-time now, I'd really like it to be full-time. Well, that's, that's where you're headed down the path and down the road. And that's where I'm probably most uncomfortable. So I'm going to oppose the amendment for tonight, but I want to go on record as expressing my concern, which has been consistent, and I certainly haven't hidden away from it or run from it. And I would have said the same thing last year, and I was saying the same thing this year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Zede. Councillor Donahue?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to really, the Ward Four councillor sentiment and, and what was said there. I strongly agree with that sentiment, and I do support this position. I, I think it's extremely valuable, because it's allowing us to get things done right the first time around. If we have the right, you know, if we have an actual manager of a project, it is going to save us money. So I do want to just agree with that, and, and I do support this position. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Donahue. Further discussion? All right.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call on the cut of, to zero on 51122. Councillor Donahue?
No.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
No.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Preston?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
No.
Councillor Wright?
No.
Councillor Zede?
No.
Councillor Cameron?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
Further items on page 59, mayor's office. Donahue, I think you need to take your hand down. All right, seeing none on page 59. Move on to general administration, page 60. Any items here? Councillor Zede?
Motion to cut 53004 from 27.5 to 20.
Second.
Which one? 53 what?
53004, training travel.
Cut back to 20?
Yes, please.
And the second was from councillor Vogel, or councillor McCauley?
Yeah, so I mean, I think this is a common theme one, so there's not a need to spend a great amount of time on it. But my ideal situation is that some of the training money lives here, where it's allocatable, if that's a word, to a variety of reasons as they come up, and the rest of the money lives in the department where it needs to go. And one thing I've learned over the years is that some of these trainings are actually mandated, must be done, and they're actually assigned to a specific department, possibly of a specific person, in order to maintain a licensure they have or to achieve a licensure. So, you know, this is, this is one of the, sort of the cons, if you will, of having the groups, because then the money just lives in the group, and it can, can sort of move around. So I think I'm just suggesting we bring it back down to 20. You'll notice it's been a little bit uneven, but it's hard to look at some of these previous numbers because of the impact of COVID over the years. But historically, this, this, this line comes up, and I'm suggesting this $7,500 cut.
Further discussion? All right, roll call.
Roll call on cutting it by 7,500 to 20,000. Councillor Donahue?
No.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Motion passes.
Further items on page 60. Councillor Lane?
53400, just curious, so we're not going to be recording meetings any longer? Is that what I'm seeing here? We're getting rid of meeting recordings?
I can help with that, if you want.
Councillor Zede?
Yeah, thank you, president. This did come up in committee, and Ethan's here can corroborate, but basically, this, it's not that they're not going to be happening. This has been shifted into the Comcast Tech Fund, if I recall correctly. So it's just a shifting of funds. But meetings will continue to be recorded in accordance with the city ordinance on land use boards.
Correct. Just to echo that, it is not a cut in funding or services. It's simply a cost shift from the operating budget to the Comcast technology funding source.
Okay. Further comments on page 60? Amendments? Seeing none, page 61. All right. Moving on to the auditor's office, page 73. Sorry.
IT.
Oh, I'm sorry, IT.
Get ahead of yourself.
Hey, my bad. IT, sorry. 65. Councillor Zede?
Motion to cut 51102 by 75K. Thank you. So this is the IT support analyst, as we know. IT is, is facing a bit of a challenge, actually doesn't have any of the positions filled, as far as I know, and is mostly being buoyed by acting IT, our finance director, and then some sort of external assistance. So this, this position, we talked about at length, because it was created last year, but it was never filled. And I, I brought up several concerns then that I don't think I need to rehash now, but bottom line is two things. I think this, this department needs to stabilize a little bit. And if, if it's decided that, you know, we do want to have more of the in-house, let's call it, versus more, versus more of the outsourced, then I think a supplemental could make sense. And that's a debate that, that the finance director has mentioned is currently being had, and they're looking at other cities and towns. And the second thing is, there's still considerable market difficulties, as with most things, labor these days. And I suspect that, in my experience, and this is the world I live in professionally, is that the, the IT salary, you know, might not be commensurate with market, and that might be why there's a challenge in filling it. So there's another potential use of those funds to move it. So basically, I'm suggesting remove the position for now, and then you have, you have that 75, which again, could be either reallocated in part to outsourced services, in part to a, to, to the salary of a potential director in the future, if that's necessary, you know, or, or simply they go entirely outsourced, and then it all goes into the purchase of services category. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Just to clarify, you're dropping it to zero?
Correct. That's the proposal.
Councillor Preston?
So I don't disagree with the proposal. I do, I do think getting rid of the analyst position and bumping up the salary for the IT director position, as well as bumping up professional services, would be a better strategy. But given that we cannot add to the budget, if we were to eliminate this position down to zero, it gives no room for the administration to either increase the IT director's salary position or within professional services.
First councillor McCauley?
Yeah, thanks. So I, I understand the councillor's rationale, we take the 75,000 and maybe split, but that's not our purview to be able to do that. So this, again, is an example, a good example of how we use a supplementary budget. This is how this position was created. The previous administration had come to us saying, we want an analyst, somebody to train in case something happens to the other one. We couldn't find the person in time to be able to do that. We created this as a supplemental, prorated it through the year along the way, and now this is the, this is the annualized type of rate that we would see, that the councillor from Ward One has been reminding us, part-time people become full-time people going forward. So I would support this cut with the idea that we've, we've signaled our intention to the administration, that we, we'd welcome reintroducing portions of that $75,000 back into this department if need be, and would do so via a supplemental budget. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCauley.
Yeah, I just wanted to reply on the sort of structural question about, or procedural question, maybe is a better way to say it. So if the money stays in here, then one of a couple of things can happen. One is, the council could entertain a transfer at some point during the fiscal year, which could be a way to move it, say, from personnel into purchase. Or it stays in personnel, and then, you know, what we've just talked about, where money could be moved in between those lines without the council could be done. And then we would have the discussion posthumously, in a way, next year when we do the committee. So what I suggest to the, to the question is that my proposal or my, the one reason for my cut too, is it will provide better process, because essentially, to do a supplemental, you have to come in and explain, here's what the structure of this department's going to be going forward, and we have the discussion then, rather than doing it after, which we just did on some other items, and you can see why it's not the funnest way to do it, and that this, this would be better. And I just, I think this needs to be cleaned up. And I actually would say, just for myself, I don't know the answer. I'm not in the muni world, so I don't know if it makes sense to go fully outsourced. I don't know if it makes sense to have a director and then have a, a support analyst. That needs to be figured out. And then once there's a plan, then I think you can come and propose it, and the 75K will likely remain unallocated, or if there is an attempt to allocate it to anything else, it would have to come in as a supplemental too. So you get it at both ends in terms of having control. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, roll call.
So motion to cut 51102 by 75,000. Councillor Donahue?
No.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
And councillor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes 10-1.
Additional items on page 65, IT. Councillor Lane?
Motion to, zero, 51404, the travel allowance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just in the, in the spirit of we're cutting all the travel allowances, and we don't have an IT director right now, I don't see a purpose why we're going to spend $5,100 on a empty position right now. And I don't really see why, if our mayor can't travel, why an IT director would have to travel for the same amount.
Director Danny?
If I could just point out, that position, of course, is a member of a collecting bargaining unit. So if we are able to hire the position within the, the budgetary constraints, we would be obligated to pay that, to, to that person.
Thank you, Ethan. Further discussion? All right, roll call on the amendment.
Roll call on the cut of $5,100 from 51404. Councillor Donahue?
No.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright? Counselor Wright, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion passes.
Further items on page 65. All right. Now, we have page 73. Seeing no hands. The assessor, page 77. Anyone? All right.
Julie?
Counselor Lane.
Yep, 51404, the travel allowance, motion to cut that in half.
You can't.
No?
Contract.
Explain to me why.
So, so the amendment is to cut it in half?
Yep.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it, for a discussion.
All right. Counselor Lane, discussion?
Nope.
Sure, there? Counselor, Counselor McCauley, and then Ethan.
I'll yield to Counsel.
Thank you. So the council has already approved that contract, which includes this $425 per month stipend. Uh, so you are contractually obligated to follow through with this budget request.
Counselor Lane, and then Counselor Zede.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so again, just trying to fill in some of the gaps here. So this one, to me, is different than the last one, because there was slack, basically, in the budget. So that can, that can be washed out in the 75, the 5, and whatever happens with the director's salary. We did have a lengthy discussion about this in the past couple of years, and DOR issued a, an opinion, I think is the right word, that when a council funds the first year of a contract, then it obligates itself to the remaining years in the contract. So in this case, this is a filled position. There's, I don't know if there'll be any other changes, but I won't support this one, because it is, in my opinion, a contractual obligation here that we've made.
I'll rescind my motion. Withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
Withdrawn.
All right. Further discussions on page 77, any other items? All right, let's move to page 83, Treasurer's Office. Any items? All right. Moving right along, Emergency Management, page 89. Any items? All right, moving right along, Fire Department, page 96. And I'll give page 97 as well. Any items? All right. Here in nine, moving right along, Police, page 108. Any items? All right, moving right along, Harbor Master, page 116. Counselor Zede.
Uh, motion to cut 57800 by $10.
Which one?
57800.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I don't care about the $10. I just wanted to comment that this is, again, a continuation. So this was another agreement that was formed. We just got a copy, but I actually have to admit, I, as I think I'm familiar with the waterfront, but I didn't know that this agreement was penned. So it was a three-year agreement between the former administration, apparently, and the waterfront trust, obligating a $5,000 per year payment, because the docs tie up to the pilings, which are, which was the NRA's final act, in a sense, the New Report Redevelopment Authority, handing over 50% of the submerged tidelands. So that's a whole bunch of word soup for you. But again, I'm just, can you keep pushing for clarity on this? You know, we could have shovels in the ground in 12 to 18 months on this park, and we just have got to figure this out. And at the end of the day, it's not so much about which party is which. It's about, is the park going to be taken care of, and are we going to have this nice park that is cared for? Or are we going to set ourselves up for, you know, somewhat of a maintenance nightmare? So, and I'll withdraw my, my motion. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the Health Department, page 125. Counselor Zede.
Uh, motion to cut 51122, which is the Salary Project Assistant, from 8K to zero.
Second.
Discussion?
I don't need to say too much, but it's, it was another new position. Again, I understand the position, I understand the need. I'm just not feeling personally the appetite to fund these new hires at this time. So I'm suggesting we hang on to it, and we can certainly reconsider it in the future. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Uh, the second was by?
Counsel McCauley. Oh, sorry, Counsel Lane. Sorry, Counsel Lane.
Cut by $8,000, 51122.
Cut by 8,000? Did you say eight or five?
I meant 8,000.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Wallace, then Counsel McCauley.
Oh.
No, just her.
Okay, Counsel Wallace.
Sorry, to refresh my memory, what is the role of this position exactly? And what would happen if we do not fund it?
Looking for someone?
The health director's here.
Here.
This position was created on COVID, so it was an additional position that was paid for out of the COVID funding that helps our department with answering phone calls, responding to COVID compliance calls, responding to different calls, people looking for tests, and bringing things in, and things like that. So it helps our department a lot with, like, filing and everything. We're just looking to keep that person on.
Counsel Cameron.
And I'm sorry, I missed that portion of the budget hearing that night. And so $8,000, how many hours is that?
They're just part-time.
Part-time, 20 hours, part-time, 10 hours?
19.
19. And the eight grand covers that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, she also works for Conserv-
Energy and Sustainability.
Energy and Sustainability, so she helps with the stickers for the trash and all that stuff. Oh, there, okay, there's another, I didn't know for budget, I'm sorry. There's another 8,000 that comes out of her budget for that.
Andrew, you want to speak up?
I didn't know for my own budget as well.
It's just to clarify, that's 8,000, Health, 8,000 from Sustainability. Am I saying right?
Thank you. Further discussion? Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Roll call on cutting 51122. Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
That was yes or?
No.
No, thank you. Motion fails.
Further cuts for 125, Health Department. All right. Animal Control, page 126. Seeing no hands. Sustainability, page 134. Still seeing no hands. Moving on to DPS Highway, page 144. Page 145, including snow and ice. Seeing no hands. Counselor Lane.
Just a question on, um, highway fuel and oil is getting cut by 41,000? I just want some clarity on that.
At the time we developed this budget, we didn't have those numbers in. Our contract expires on June 30th. Um, we're in the consortium with the town of Andover. So they went up to bid, I just found out this week, that they rejected Montanello's low bid because of their performance on the Columbus gas breaks in Andover. So what the municipalities are doing that are involved in that consortium is, um, but going out to the state bid list, and I've been working on that. So the numbers have come in at an increase of 30%. Um, and what, what happens with that is there's a daily price index that we have to follow, and this is price ceiling. So for this year, that's what a lot of the municipalities are doing. Rather than entering into a contract with a gas company, we're going through that state bid list, and then probably put a back, backwoods bid for next year.
Counselor Zede.
Yeah, just to help add to the story, and Ethan might help as well. But this did come up in committee in the workshop, and the discussion we had there was that the 146 was a bit of an anomaly number. So if you go back another year to 96K in FY '22, this is an increase, although it sounds like it may not be a sufficient increase relative to the new bid. But the FY '22 number was a little bit of a crazy year, and maybe Ethan can explain why, or Julie can, if they know. That's my recollection from our workshop discussion.
Sure, yeah, now just clarify. So it's actually, it's, it is an increase over the FY '22 original budget. The, the thing to remember with this particular line item is that we do the, do the transfers in from the Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Fund, which causes the revised figure to look higher, which in turn makes it look like it's being cut, when it's actually still increasing $9,000 over where it was last year. But yes, based on what Julie said, it is potential that, that not, that the $9,000 increase from the original still might not be enough, in which case we'd come to you with a supplemental request for our transfer.
Look forward to it.
Thanks.
Does that answer your question, Counselor? Thank you. All right. Any other items on page 144, 145, DPS Highway? All right, DPS Water, page 156 and 157. Seeing no hands. Sewer, 168 and 169. Seeing no hands. Moving on to the Planning Department.
Just one note, I just want to note for posterity on the record that, I'm looking to Ethan, but the sewer one is the one that, the water one, pardon me, is the one that was revised. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, that was revised by the administration to include the debt service for Phillips Drive, which was not included in the original version. So when we vote tonight, that is already, the administration can bring that forward. It's not an amendment, but just so that everybody's clear. So the actual increase went from 5.5% to 7.7? 7.7.
And this is on page 157, for folks keeping track.
That's right. One, yep, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no items on Sewer? All right, so moving on to the Planning Department, page 182. So just Planning and Development, first. Uh, Licensing Commission. Page 183, Cotton Baham, Planning Board, ZBA, and Historical Commission. Seeing no hands. Moving right along to page 188, the Building Department. Counselor Zede.
Uh, motion to cut 54200 by 10K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So we found out in the workshop that this is basically to fund, it's essentially a one-time purchase of filing cabinets. And I know that myself and the finance director have discussed this over the years about the definition of capital. Um, and this is smaller than then technically that definition. But to me, this just makes sense to put it back to 2K where it was and do a one-time transfer, if it's basically aligning with a one-time purchase. I mean, presumably, file cabinets have a decently long life, and that could, if I had my druthers, would come out of some of the revolving funds that are related to building, electrical, plumbing, et cetera, understanding that they pay the inspectors out of that as well. So that's my suggestion. It's not opposed to the underlying use of the funds.
Further discussion? Roll call.
So cut by $10,000, line item 54200.
Is it 10,000?
Correct, to put it back to 2, where it was.
Yes. Counselor Donahue?
I'm sorry, I got completely distracted. Quick point of clarity, what the amendment is?
Uh, it's to cut $10,000 from line item Building Office Supplies, 54200, which essentially would place it back to $2,000.
I see, okay. No.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright? Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else on Building Department? All right, page 199, Parks. Counselor Zede.
Sorry, I have a couple of them here. So first one is motion to cut 55800 Landscape Materials by, by 9,000.
Second.
To 25, to cut it in half, the increase. So, you know, we talked about this in committee, and I understand that there are inflationary pressures on just about everything. But what I was struggling with is, is the amount of the increase here, and I stated that during the workshop. So this is an 82% increase in this line. And I get that some of it, I think, is probably from new initiatives or new things that wish to be done. But I think this would make more sense to be what is still, frankly, a fairly substantial increase, and far outpacing what we see in other departments for materials and so forth. But we just bring it in a little bit. Thank you.
Just to make sure I heard correctly, you wanted to reduce it by 9,200?
9, 9,225, so basically, half the 18,5.
Thank you, half. All right, further discussion. Counselor Khan?
Um, yeah, thank you, Counsel President. If I'm understanding correct, the reason for that increase was due to the increase in cost of materials. So it's not really arbitrary, but as we all have recognized, there is an increase in materials. You know, we're talking about what's kind of the lay of the land, and, you know, I am not comfortable, because that was something that we did talk about and was brought up. So I am not going to support that cut. Thank you.
Counsel Vogel.
Thank you, I'm not in supporting, I am not in support of the cut as well. I think we tie the hands of the Parks Department significantly as we go along, and I don't see any reason to tie their hands in terms of being able to keep our parks looking well.
Further discussion? Seeing no hands, roll call vote.
Motion to cut by 50%, 55800. Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
Counselor Zede.
Uh, thank you, I apologize for going up and down the page, it's my mistake. But motion to cut 51901 by, by 5,000.
Second.
So this is a perennially discussed line as well, and it usually sent, for me anyway, centers around breakdown between time spent in the neighborhoods versus time spent downtown. And I understand that this comes out of, you know, this is also part of, it's a small part of the transfer that comes out of the parking, the downtown, so-called Downtown Improvement Fund. But from what I've learned or understand, parks is primarily constrained by time, by human time. And so it's not just a question of if you fund them both and they both get done. It's a question of if you're here, you can't be there. And it's really that simple. So I'm not proposing we eliminate the cut. It was, it was 24,000, and it was proposed to go to 34. I'm suggesting we split the difference and go to 29, and hopefully that will give some more opportunity for some downtown stuff, but also provide some opportunity to get out into the neighborhood parks and take care of those the same.
Further discussion? Counsel Wallace.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Sorry, my voice is starting to go. Yeah, I, I, my, my issue with some of these in parks, and the reason I voted no on the last one, and perhaps may agree with the Counsel for Ward 1 on this, is I don't know what the funds are coming in from the Parks Conservancy. So I don't know what additional funds may be available, and what the city may be required to pay. And maybe not even just the Parks Conservancy, but kind of the whole picture of, you know, what does each park need, and what are they getting from other funds? So it's hard to know. it's hard to know where the city needs to step in, if that makes sense. And I believe Counselor Zede asked for some of the numbers, this was way back, for Parks Conservancy, Director Manning, but we didn't, we didn't get a whole lot. So that may be a bigger discussion at a later time, but that's kind of my hesitation in voting for the complete, you know, increase in some of these. Thank you.
Counsel Wallace. Counselor Khan has not spoken on this one?
Well, did, may I ask, sorry, thank you, Council President. Great question. I do wonder, and I, again, in our budget books, we have the section, and I don't know if the Counsel for Ward 4 is referring to like the Moral Foundation funds, or is there additional? Because that's what I guess I'm trying to, the Parks Conservancy, and we do have the Parks Director, so maybe get some clarification if that's okay. But is that what you were referring?
Kind of. Did you want to?
So Counselor Zede, I mean, then we can also ask the Parks Director if you have any comments here.
So specifically, the Conservancy is a subsidiary of the Mayor Gayden W. Moral Charitable Foundation, and its original intent was to raise money to care for parks. One thing that has happened, because another directive from the trustees of the Moral Foundation, was that donations are directed by the donor. They can only be spent the way the donor intends. So we have, in the Conservancy, there are funds that have to be spent on frog pond cleanup. There are funds that have to be spent on replacing the basketball padding around the basketball poles. There are funds that have to be spent certain ways for the fountain, restoring the fountain. Another example. I don't have specific numbers in my head, and I wasn't prepared to tell you how much the Conservancy will contribute this year or has contributed at this time. I mean, I can provide you with that information in future, but again, I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. But I can tell you that they are not, the Conservancy is not paying for city staff.
Thank you. Counselor Khan and Counselor Zede.
I was just gonna, yeah, sorry. Thank you, Council President. Yeah, thank you to our Parks Director. So in terms of, you know, when we had the budget hearing in the Parks Department, one of the things I heard very loud and clear, and this is why I kind of went back to the materials costs, the cost too of the minimum wage, when we talked about a lot of the folks who were working for the parks got picked up and are basically working for a lot of private landscapers because of what they get paid. And so part of it is, you know, I heard with, you know, downtown versus attention at some of the other parks. And I think if we have maybe issues with the attention at other parks, I didn't, I guess in the budget hearing, hear that that was a big issue. So I'm at this, I'm not probably going to at all support this cut because, again, when we talked about it, there was a lot of the need for it, for the downtown, and recognizing that things are not costing the same as they were before. Thank you.
Counselor Khan. Counselor Zede.
Okay, he hasn't spoken yet.
I'm sorry, Counsel Lane?
I'll go after.
Yeah, just, if I could ask the Parks Director, does the, does that material, does that include fixing the cobblestone wall at Mosley? It's been like that for three years, or?
Which line are you referring to?
Sorry, so we've already discussed the landscape material. So the one that's on the floor right now is the 51901, the Parks Downtown Labor Improvement Labor.
Forget it, then. I missed the boat. I was looking at that and thought of it afterward. But I'll ask the question again offline.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, I'll support this $5,000 drop. I think that if expenses go high, I think they can request a transfer from the Downtown Parking Fund. And I do, as Ward Counselor in the distant wards, we have some parks that get visited only minimally, and downtown does get a lot of attention. And we do have a fund that can pay for that. So again, cutting it in half just kind of keeps us level set. And again, if costs for one reason or another, labor, et cetera, go up, there is the Downtown Parking Fund to drop them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Further discussion. Counselor Zede?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, it was a real, you know, talking about the sources of funding, it was kind of a revelation, I have to say. I didn't, I didn't know that the Parks Conservancy was considered a subsidiary of the Moral Foundation. So there's Parks Conservancy money, which is typically gifts donated, which could be for directed purposes, as we see with various gifts, and usually those come through the council. And we have had a discussion with the Finance Director about those gifts coming through the council, as is customary. I think $500 is usually considered the threshold when the council must accept. Then separately, there's the Moral Foundation, which provides an annual grant to the city, and we do typically bring those through. I'm sure everybody will remember that, and they usually ask for that to be spent on capital. So that was new. The only thing I wanted to reply to is just, you know, just look, just the numbers themselves. So we're going from 24 to 34, which is a 42% increase. 5K is still a 22% increase. Inflation is crazy, but there is sort of a line here. I mean, typically inflation's running about 8% to 9% year over year. So that's part of my rationale for this, is things need to track relatively accordingly. And so, yes, costs are going up, but this entire department actually has, I think, the single largest percentage gain of any in the entire budget, which is okay. It's not in itself, itself, an indicator, but just to indicate where I'm coming from is looking strictly at the numbers. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Counselor Zede. Further discussion. All right, roll call.
Motion to cut $5,000 from 51901. Counselor Donahue?
Sorry about that. Hadn't trouble with the mute button, but no.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion passes.
Further line items for Parks. Seeing no hands. Page 208, Council on Aging. And did something just happen to the Zoom?
Oh, no.
Still down there.
We're expended.
Way to go.
You could just click the icon.
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Second.
Good, we're good.
We'll still use a five-minute recess.
It was minimized.
Starting with page 208, Council on Aging. Counselor Zede?
Motion to cut 51165 by 53K.
Second.
So we did have a good amount of discussion. I think that the, a good case was presented for the need. But a couple of thoughts. One is, again, it's a new hire, so that's a consideration at 53,000. The second one is, as I was kind of going through my notes, I noted to myself, you know, is this something that, you know, could be, could be a work-off program, kind of eligible for, to have some folks calling out and trying to reach folks who maybe need assistance. And then the third and final point I would make is, this is another one where there does appear to be some overlap, I think. There's outreach happening in various places, various departments, and I think there could be some synergies to sort of squeeze out before considering adding a dedicated position in the COA. So I understand why they want it. I understand what the position is. I get it. But I'm asking the council to hold off on this position until maybe next year or in the future when we can see fit.
Further discussion. Seeing no hands, roll call.
Roll call, 51165, cut 53,000. Counselor Donahue? Thank you. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
Additional items on page 208. Seeing no hands, let's go to the library, page 218. Any hands? Seeing none? You're off the hook. Youth Services, page 229.
Motion to cut 52702 by 30K.
Second.
So during our workshop, we did have the NYSS Director in, and we sort of were probing around this line, its rent temporary space. Just in terms of what the response was, was they're planning to leave the current temporary space that they have. There is no specific plan for this 30, and that they don't have another place lined up. They're not sure if they're going to have a place lined up, obviously leaving out all of the uncertainty around 59 Low Street. So my suggestion is that, you know, and actually, this number didn't have any specific basis. They weren't thinking like, okay, it's $5,000 a month for six months or something. It was sort of just a placeholder. And to that end, I suggest that we remove it from the budget at this time. And, you know, when there is clarity on potentially what 59 Low might look like, or whatever the timeline is, that would be good, a good time to maybe reconsider this as a one-time transfer, if that's what it ends up needing to be, because it's a bridge to something else or a longer term, if that's what it is. I really have no idea. The other thing I think that's important to note is that, you know, it, there's, you know, there's a lot of discussion around the revolving fund and all those sorts of things, but this is in the city budget. There could be discussion about using revolving funds as well. So I think that could be part of the conversation too. So I'm suggesting we cut out the 30. And then the last point, I now remember what I wanted to say too, is I really do think that in the coming weeks, when we are able to get some clarity and start to get some direction and maybe build consensus against something, there needs to be a bridge operational plan that everybody can see and understand. Because I think one thing I noted during the workshops is there, and other discussions, is a disconnect between sort of acute problems and the longer term. And maybe everybody wants the long term to happen sooner. Certainly understand that, but it is what it is. So that's my suggestion. We can always reconsider it if and when there's a plan to back it up.
Thank you, Counsel Zede. Counsel Vogel?
Thank you. I won't support the cut. I like the flexibility. Should, should something come along, the process of getting funds from us or through that, you know, yes, I'd like to rent, or yes, I'd like to use this space, but give me a month and a half to get the money together. So I'd like to leave that in there. I think that Youth Services at this point in time needs less stress and more flexibility. And so I don't think there's any issue with it just sitting in there, and we can move it around later on as we see fit.
Thank you, Counsel Vogel. Further discussion. Seeing no hands, roll call.
Roll call on cutting 30,000 from 52702. Counselor Donahue?
No. And I'm sorry, but this is going to be my last vote. I got to cut out. I'm so sorry, guys. I actually don't support any cuts further, and I hope you all have a great night. I got to go eat dinner and start my vacation.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you, Counsel Donahue.
That's a no. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
And Counselor Cameron?
No.
And Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion passes.
Further cuts, amendments. Counsel McCauley?
I'd like to take item 51404, remove the $1,200 increase and go back to the original travel allowance. Yeah, I don't like travel allowances, right? I've made that known. I do think that there is a travel allowance in here, and, you know, I think that's sufficient. Thank you.
Further discussion?
So the motion was to cut it 1,200?
Yes.
So keep it level. Thank you.
Counsel Vogel?
Yeah, just a question to the, Ethan, if I may, is that, where do we stand on that travel allowance?
That is part of an employment contract with the director.
So all the way to the 3,300, that's there? So we can't, so it's a contractual item? Okay, I don't mean to stump you.
It is not part of a collective bargaining agreement.
It's just a contractual item, a contract, a contract agreement. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to stand opposed. At this particular time, when Youth Services is all over town and all over the place and doing their best that they can, I don't see any reason at all to stifle their energy. I stand firmly in favor of Youth Services and any and all that can go to them.
Counsel Lane?
Could I ask a question of Ethan again?
Sure.
When we keep going over these contractual things, were these the contracts that were written last year?
It would depend on which one you're referring to.
Well, I think they were all rewritten last year, right?
The bulk of them, yes.
So this was written in last year of previous administration on the way out?
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Wallace and then Counsel Cameron?
Another question for Ethan. Was it, was it the 3,300 that was in the contract? Or was it the additional 1,200 in the contract? Like, do you know what I'm saying?
I believe it includes the 3,300.
But not the additional? So this would be?
The total stipend is 3,300.
3,300. So this would be, okay, gotcha.
Hang on one second. Counsel Sharon, did you have your hand up? Okay.
That was my question.
Back to Counsel Lane.
Yeah, I'm going to support this cut. Just going to make the statement, a lot of these things that we can't change now are written on a administration on their way out, just to bring that point up to light. Okay? So when there's a shortfall of money in the city, we know where we can look.
Counsel McCauley?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. So last year, we rejected this increase as well. And then subsequently, it appears that there was a contract written, but it is subject to appropriation, and we are the appropriating fund. So we have the authority to say no right now, and that's where we are. So my ask is still to go back to the original stipend. Thank you.
Further discussion. Roll call.
So roll call on cutting 1,200 from lined up in 51404. Counsel Donahue is gone. Thank you, sorry. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails, 5-6.
No, it's 5-5.
That was only 5-5.
Five to five, actually.
Motion fails, 5-5. Sorry.
Why?
You need six.
You need six. You need six to win.
It's a hard six. Doesn't sound right when I say that, but it can be a hard six.
Yeah.
All right.
Doesn't sound very democratic to me, but that's okay.
So further items on page 229. Seeing none, Veterans Services, page 234. So that would be Veterans Services, non-shared expenses? All right, page 235, Veterans Services, I'm sorry, Counsel Zede?
Yeah, 235 with you.
Okay, 235, shared expenses.
Motion to cut 51166 by 19-5.
Second.
So this is, this is a new hire, so we talked about that ad nauseam. But I do want to say with respect that I didn't find the position to be very compelling in this case. I think I understood that, you know, it is unfortunate, but that the state dumped some new software on these departments, and that's a challenge. But unfortunately, in these times, I think that needs to just catch up. I also want to note that we did, in recent years, make a substantial increase to the Assistant Director, and then combine that with what I understand as a declining trend. and then combine that with what I understand as a declining trend in the number of veterans that we're serving. And you can see that a little bit in there. So I think that we can hold off personally on, my thought is we can hold off on this position. And if it really is still needed, we can always reconsider it in the future. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Motion to cut 195 from 51166. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion passes.
Further items on page 235. All right, moving on to education, page 239. We can do this in three. We can start with Newburyport Public Schools. Counselor McCauley?
Motion to cut from the city's allocation, 82,400, the Human Resources Director.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion on this is that this is typically a shared expense with the city. We spent considerable amount of debate last year hiring a HR Director with an assistant with a job description that supported the schools wholeheartedly and has continued to do so. The position is overlay, overlap in some of the job description that's there. They may have some rationale for it, but it is typically a shared expense along the city. If they truly needed one, then I would have thought that they would have asked for an assistant in the HR Department in the shared aspect, as opposed to their own HR Director. Thank you.
Could you repeat your cut? I'm sorry.
My what?
The cut.
Your motion?
Remove 82,400 from the city's allocation?
From 53201?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have those.
Yes.
That's what I was looking for.
That's on the city.
That's the general?
It's Newburyport Public Schools.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
239?
Page 239.
Yes, page 239.
I could explain.
Page 239.
I'm on page two of 34 of their book.
Oh, wow.
I could. So Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just want to say, if people want to see the presentation, it's under the NPS Whittier tab. And if you go, you could see on page two of 34, the breakdown on the budget adds. And that would help you, and on the side, under comments, it indicates where that add is. So this is under the Newburyport High School, under professional, for central office, sorry. Central Office is where you'll see that.
Okay, two of 34. Central Office. 824 would become zero.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. Since the council cannot change the line items within the school budget, the cut would be to the overall city appropriation. So that's the 53201 line out.
Right.
Which page is that on?
That's on page 239.
So it'd be from?
53201 at the top.
Got it.
Counselor Wallace?
Just a question. So if the city were to cut 82 grand, then does it go back to the school committee and they can determine where they want that 82 to come out? So it doesn't, it's not necessarily going to this position that Counsel, the Counselor for Ward 5 is referring to?
Correct.
Just, okay.
Mr. Gallagher or one of the school committee members sitting here?
You can cut the budget by 824, but it's back to the school committee and superintendent to determine where it could come from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Further discussion on this cut? Counselor Khan?
Wait, yeah, thank you, Counsel President. You know, I, I won't support cutting anything from the school budget. I'll start with that. Second, you know, there's been weeks of meetings, presentations, discussions on these items, and I do appreciate the conversation here. Since we do have, and I don't know if everyone had privy to hearing about this particular, this particular role that was, again, it's in the school committee meetings and I don't know if people have had time, but since we have the benefit of the public here, the counselors may invite someone from the school department, central office to explain. And that might help folks here before we decide to just go for this line item or this amount.
Who would you like to? Mr. Gallagher or, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Yeah, no problem. But yeah, so just following Mr. Littleale. So overall, the city council, you vote on the bottom line. Then we would go back, if it's 82,000 reduction, then we figure out where that's going to come from. So it's not, you know, HR or central office. So that's important to understand. I think the second piece is we have three unions, we have 432 employees in the district. Part of our process in working with the school committee is there is a need for HR. I think school personnel matters are a lot different than city personnel as you're working with children, confidentiality. There's a lot of laws and regulations that educators are held to, especially working with children and families. So, you know, that position, we feel will support the district as we're moving forward. So that's kind of where we're at. But overall, it's city councils up or down? And if it's down, then we regroup and we find out, you know, where we're going to, you know, get those cuts. So that answered your question. How'd I do, Mr. Littleale, all right?
Thank you, Superintendent.
I'm a lot more friendly than Mr. Littleale, so.
Counselor Zede?
Yeah, I have a couple thoughts. One is, you know, I think it's, you know, I had a question from another counselor about, you know, what does the council do with the individual lines in the school budget? But, and we don't have, we don't really peek into that per se, but I think it's very sensible to have, to look at that and explain why you're making a cut. So I mean, I think that's a sensible thing to do and to tag it with a certain amount. I hear what the superintendent's saying. I'm very mixed on this one. The biggest concern I have is the same concern I have across the whole city, which is these continuously overlapping things. And we deal with it in so many areas. We have departments that do physical things in the city like mowing, and then we have all these Venn diagrams between DPS and parks and schools. And then we have HR. And now, I mean, if you'll recall, 10 years ago, we didn't have a city HR department, we had no HR. So clearly, it's an important function and it's very important. But it does make you wonder when you're duplicating positions or having cross, you know, things that are basically crossing, and do you really need a full, another full-time person? If there's a full-time person already, is their bandwidth exceeded or capped? Or are they unable to keep up with it? Is it a question of being specialized and being unable to learn? I've been a longtime proponent of increasing the school budget, but for me anyways, I really want to see it go into academics and education. So that's a bit of a challenge for me. I understand that support roles are needed in order to make that possible. So I'm 50/50 on this one. I'm not inclined to cut the school budget, but I do think that it's a question that probably, it's hard, because again, once these things take root, then they just exist for all of time, it seems. So it's very difficult when you're creating new positions. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Wright? You're muted.
So thank you, Counsel President. I too don't think there's any real benefit to cutting the school budget. However, while we're on the subject, I have some concerns about funding teaching positions or support positions out of what is the equivalent of ARPA money, which is a one-time source. And then you, in subsequent years, you create a structural deficit. I mentioned it in the budget hearings, and I'd like to be on record to have my, my feelings in regard to that on record.
Thank you, Counsel Wright. Counselor Vogel? And then Counselor Khan?
I'm going to rise opposed to the cut. I think that the explanation by the superintendent was very clear. It's not necessarily a crossover position. It's certainly a position that requires the depth of understanding of regulations around dealing with school matters. I'm not inclined at all to cut anything with the school budget right on down the line.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah. I propose this, and I do this every year, to propose a cut for the schools so we can have this debate. And the point is that this is our single biggest line item, and we owe it to everyone. We are the, we are the last stop between us and the taxpayers. You heard from the school administration that they just get a line item. So all of this stuff that we saw really is irrelevant. They need it for them, but it's irrelevant to us. They need $35 million or whatever the case may be from us going forward. To the Counselor's point, Counselor Wright's point, there is already a structural deficit built in here going forward. And we need to be aware of that. And whether we deal with it now or we deal with it later, we're going to have to deal with it. There are positions in here that were funded by ESAR that are now partially funded by the city going forward. We do have, for example, no-fee kindergarten that is now setting us up for additional funding requirements going forward next year. Because in addition to the no-fee for the kindergarten comes a, an additional headcount for a special, for a teacher dedicated to that, plus three additional aides. So what we've already determined is that free stuff is going to, a free kindergarten is going to bring more attendees in and require more resources going forward. So what we have here is, we have a pretty modest recommendation from the school, request from the schools, given the fact that they've had a labor negotiation with three labor unions and have resolved those, and those are inclusive here in this budget. But what we do have is next year is we have a level-funded budget. And we have to acknowledge that. This, this $300,000 that we have for non-char, you know, taking out of the revolving fund because we're no longer going to subsidize our full-time, or have subsidized our full-time kindergarten is setting us up for failure. And it's setting us up for layoffs, given regardless of what happens in the, in the economic outlook going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCauley. Counselor Khan?
Great, thank you, Counsel President. I mean, as someone who's been kind of, again, following the process from the schools, I hope people recognize the change of how information is presented here and that there is a lot of transparency. So we could see in the comment section, and I encourage everyone, what's being funded from ESAR and what's the specific aspects for each line item? In terms of the elimination of kindergarten, I mean, yeah, I think we all heard that and I think that was a big campaign topic too for whoever was going to be mayor. But, and I think we're getting to this point. Part of the conversation between council and school committee is goal-setting, is when you look at the strategic plan effort that they went through. And there's a lot of detail put around in terms of where the city wants to go and where the schools want to go. It's really important to pay attention to those and ask a lot of these questions as we go along. So in recognizing some of the aspects of what's happening with this, you know, it happened with Late Start. When you had Late Start, there were some ripple effects of how that influences other aspects that are maybe the unknowns in your budgetary requirements. But similarly, here, there is a budgetary aspect, but then there's also a balance. And the balance, you know, if you look at the sources of funds, you could see how things are mapping out based on what we got, actually, our circuit breaker return. And yes, we had some supplemental funds available. It's not easy. And I totally agree with the point that we're at level, you know, the whole concept of level services and being able to go above that, it is a challenge. And it is something that the school is striving through, to work through. But in terms of the approach and what was able to be accomplished, given what we've seen here very transparently, I am very much in favor and I actually applaud the efforts done to try to manage all of these types of goal settings that were originally talked about years ago and to try to make them come to fruition, given what they have to work with. So I will support this and I think the transparency here, I think it's been very well presented. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Motion to cut 82400. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Wright? Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
All right, moving down the page. Essex North Shore Technical High School, line item 53202. Whittier? All right. If I'm not mistaken, next is page 248, Human Resources. Insurance Group at the bottom, still on page 248. Counselor Zede?
I'd like to cut 21, 25,000 from 51700. How much? 25K? Second. Thank you.
So this is just, you know, this line's a little bit messy this year because of the holiday and then bringing back the money and then transferring in from our one-time holiday payday. But basically, this line has historically been overfunded by more than 25. And I know that the finance director will say that, you know, you never know. And that's my point, is you never know. So I just trying to take a modest amount out. A couple of years ago, I cut 150 from it and we didn't end up needing a transfer that I can recall. So I'm just asking for a modest reduction here. If it, if it does come to be needed, then so be it. It can be a supplemental or transfer accordingly.
Second if I?
Counselor McCauley, I believe.
Further discussion? Counsel President?
Can I just get reaction from the finance director?
Director Manning?
Thank you. As, at least the folks on budget finance are aware, we did run into a deficit in the health insurance line item this year. Over the past several years, we've, we've worked to cut this line item down to what is actually needed to fund our employees' health insurance and retirees. I, I would be worried about cutting this line item as we'd be setting ourselves up in a structural deficit and we likely need a transfer next year.
Thank you for recommending. Further discussion? Seeing no hands, roll call.
Motion to cut $25,000 from 51700. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Motion fails.
Anything further on page 2488 and Insurance Group? Seeing no hands, going to page 249, Retirement System, Retirement Board specifically? Legal. Counselor Zede?
Motion to cut 53020 by 10K.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I just have a little bit of a different rationale here. It's not that I don't think we should spend this money. In fact, I think we should spend it, all of it, and maybe more if we need to. But what I'm increasingly thinking about is aligning the source of funds. So much of our litigation stems from land use instances. And I think that there should be a goal here to try and align this, some of this expenditure, which, because this is legal in sort of the umbrella sense. But when you think about it, at least for us, a lot of the things that we're engaging with relate to land use. So it's a lawsuit against the planning board or the zoning board or against whatever. And so we're collecting these funds from planning and development, you know, whatever it is, fees for, for this or fees for that. And I think that this is just a modest way to kind of make a dent in that. And we can, we can pull funds, I think, or we should pull funds from those sources so that the taxpayers aren't necessarily bearing the full weight and it's an alignment between revenue and spend.
Further discussion? All right, roll call.
Motion to cut $10,000 from 53020. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
No.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
And Counselor Shan.
No.
Motion fails.
All right, and it looks like our last page is page 250, Excluded Debt Service and Ordered Non-Excluded Debt Service. Counselor Zede.
I'd like to make a motion to cut $28,500 from 59100 and the same amount from 59150, which is long-term debt principal and long-term debt interest.
Second.
So, just to give you a better number, it's 57K. It's just split 50/50 between debt, between principal and interest. So, the reason I propose this cut is in discussion during the workshop, we basically understood from the finance director that, of course, he's counting all the money we already have committed to, and we've already bonded and is out there. And then, we have also included in this budgetary figure Phillips Drive, because remember, there's a general obligation bond in there in addition to the one that's in the water drain, and then also the fire station. And then, there was some slack, and the slack was for a future unknown debt, you know, that we might take on, and that amount was 57K, and it was split across these two lines. So, much like other things, if we don't know what it's for, then I don't think we should budget for it. We have to go through a process to bond anyways, and make that commitment at that time. It seems like the most likely scenario is that it could be used towards the bulkhead, but we don't know yet until we figure out the grant scheme and layout there, and that could be very positive and allow us to bond very little, maybe nothing. On the other hand, we could end up saturating that full 57K. So, I just proposed we hang on to that, and we'll figure it out. The only other thing I want to say that's really important to me is that should we keep this 57K in here, it's not specified to a project or later we do it, that will effectively take us up to the best practice, if you will, of hitting 2% of our operating budget towards debt. So, in other words, we cap at that unless we want it to go over it. So, that's probably fairly relevant in the context of other projects we may consider. Hi, yes.
Is your motion procedure to cut 57,000 from those two items split evenly?
Correct. It's 28,500 from each, and I just make it collectively because I think it'd be silly to do half and not the other half.
So, one from 59100 and one from 59150?
Right. 59100, 59150.
Okay. Counselor Vogel.
If we could, a comment from the finance director?
Director Manning.
The FY '23 budget proposal for debt service was built to fund what's in the CIP, and I think it works to put the city on a path where we're able to take on new debt and fund it within our operating budget rather than having to, you know, go to the taxpayers and ask for a debt exclusion. I think cutting it would kind of go against our whole long-term planning strategy in terms of growing the portion of the operating budget that we're allocating towards capital each year. And this budget brings us a little bit further, but clearly not far enough if you look at all the needs in the capital plan.
Before you go.
Counselor Lane.
We're bonded $92 million, right? How much more can we tolerate before we're in a crunch?
I think, Counselor, that's a much, much bigger question. I think if you look at our, if you're looking at it from a liability perspective versus an affordability perspective, where it's coming from, there's just a lot of questions that we need to delve into. So, I think, you know, if you look at the report that Standard and Poor's put out in May, I think from their perspective, they see the city's debt position as reasonable, and they show that we do have capacity to take on more debt. But I think really the affordability question, can we build out that line item enough in the budget to fund the debt service for these projects?
So, just to follow up, say we took on a new fire station, actually, two new fire stations, a youth services, to finish the waterfront, a new bathroom on the waterfront. Say it adds up to 15 million that we have to do. Granted, Standard and Poor's said that in May, what would they say if next year we had to bond for all those things? Where would we be? This is the time to ask that question. I would assume since it's in front of us.
I think, you know, naturally, you know, taking that on in one year, I think, would raise a lot of eyebrows.
About three.
Yeah, three. I mean, I think that's in the realm of what we're looking at in terms of potential capacity. But again, it comes down to the budget. If we can't fund the debt service, then, you know, whether we have the room on our balance sheet doesn't really matter.
One more hypothetical before you go. Say there was a $10 million infrastructure project that we didn't foresee, say, a downtown water and sewer that broke down and we had to. So, now I'm going to add 10 million more to that, so call it 25 million. Do you think we could bond to 25 million in the next 20 years?
I mean, something like that, you're looking at other funding sources, and it's, you know, very hypothetical. So, I wouldn't want to just respond to that on the fly.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Counsel Wallace, then Counselor Zede.
Could you just kind of summarize again your reasoning after hearing that?
Sure.
Just to kind of pull it all together.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to, but first, I think, I just want to explain my understanding so that I'm explaining. So, this debt service covers what we've already committed to, plus Phillips Drive, plus the fire station. I'm referring to Station 2, at the bonded amount that we approved last year. So, it's about $6 million or so. That's the baseline. And then, over and above that, there's an additional 57K baked into these two lines to support future debt. And my understanding from the workshop was, if you leave this line as it is, this is the 2% of our operating budget towards debt, which was the goal, and that we'd have to go back in the CIP to discuss. So, to me, that's the line we've been striving for. If we go past that, then we're exceeding the 2%, which is a policy question. It could be considered good, it could be considered bad, but that's what the number is. All I'm saying here in this case is that the 57K doesn't go to anything right now. It's not assigned to anything. The best guesstimate we have is that maybe it's for the bulkhead, but again, it's pending. Counselor Lane identified several other projects. I'm sure we all could rattle off at least 10 that are being considered, and, you know, I don't want to poke my own self as the bear and get started on the capital funding and how we do it. This isn't putting 57K towards anything. It's not going to go into the ground in this point unless we bond it. So, I'm just saying, just take it out of the mix, and then when there's an argument, then you get to have partially the debate Counselor Lane wants to have, which is what can you tolerate for debt, which is as much art as it is science, because it's a policy question. I mean, we're grappling with that to some degree in CPC right now, where we're saying, if you bond all this money, you're committing for 20 years. On the other hand, you get this, and what does that mean? And that's a debate. I mean, even in individual households, people have that debate. So, that's all I'm saying. I am very much in favor of spending more out of operating for capital, and interestingly, if this 57K was just put in as a capital line to actually be spent, that'd be different. But if we just commit it to a bond, then it's gone for the next 20 years, and that, again, could be good or bad depending on the project, but it's not going to be recurring money that we then get to put towards something new every year. So, there's a debate, there's a broader debate to be had, and this is a good vehicle to have it. The 57K is not going to vanish into thin air. It can be allocated as such if a plan comes forward that people like.
I see Counselor McCauley, and then I see Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I was on the fence about this, but after hearing the finance director, I'm going to vote for it and vote for the cut. And the reason being is that if we take this year and then we take next year, for example, hypothetically, that we don't spend this $57,000 this year, but we kind of allocate it towards long-term bonding capability, and then let's say we add another $43,000 next year. Now, we have $100,000 that's sitting off actually the operating aspect of the budget itself that could be used somewhere else. It seems that the longer-range plan is to build up a kitty of bonding capability going forward so that we could move quickly if we had an expense that we wanted to work on. But we all know, cities don't move quickly, especially when it comes to capital expenditures going forward. Why? That's the nature of what we do here. So, I don't necessarily think that, you know, one or the other is actually the right answer, but if pushed, I'm going to say, you know what, it's better that it's not sitting around, not working for us today and back into the operational budget. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. If I may, the planning director.
Director Manning.
Finance director, I'm sorry. Thank you. It's getting late. So, would you mind putting that into clearer terms? You know, I mean, there's talk about it sitting around, where it's talking about just being there. Say again why you put this in there. So, we have a, you know, there's a lot of words being spoken here, and I'm not really sure that they're all connecting. My understanding is that by being in there, we're not necessarily committing it to anything, nor are we committing it to bonding, right? It's just, as you say, it's a picture that we're drawing.
Yeah, I mean, I would say it's really building our toolbox to help fund our capital plan. It gives us the ability to go out and issue debt to fund the projects in our capital plan.
As they come along.
Yes.
And in doing so, you still need us, right? I mean, we're...
Of course.
Yes. So, it's, again, it's drawing a picture, and it's putting a puzzle together, and it's making the puzzle complete as best we can based on what we see, based on the cap, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, I'm trying to make it simple. We're building a picture here, and you're building a picture, and you've built that picture with these pieces of the puzzle, which is money, and this completes what you think is your picture. Is that, am I doing anything to help this? I'm trying to get this...
Yeah, I mean, I think it helps, gets us, it gets us there.
Okay.
But if you look at the CIP, the list, it's a long list.
Yeah, yeah.
It only gets us partially there.
Right. Thank you.
Counsel Wallace.
Another question. So, what, do we have a certain amount already set away? You know, so this 57,000 could go into the capital fund? I guess I'm confused what we already have, if, you know what I mean?
Sure. So, the debt service line item is fully encumbered to pay our existing debt service.
Right.
Plus, the newly issued debt for Phillips Drive and the West End Fire Station.
Right.
So, I think, yes, we have not issued all the debt to absorb the remaining $57,000. But I think, looking at the capital plan, there's definitely a need to do that and then some.
Well, I guess my question is, have you already started to kind of put money aside for the capital plan? Is there like a special capital fund?
No.
There is not, no.
Okay, okay. So, this money would go just back, you know, to, okay.
So, Counsel Cameron has his hand up.
Don't go anywhere. So, if we reduce the amount by 57,000, and there's, as you've said, and we all know, there's many capital items in the CIP, and so whatever the next one is that we're going to do and that we would need to incur debt on, we would need to approve that, and we would then, and you would need to move some mon, again, I'm saying if we cut this, you would need to find some money somewhere. Is that a transfer? Is that some other appropriation pulled out of some other fund?
Right, and potentially, there won't be any additional need for the budget in FY ' '23. It really comes in in FY '24 and '25 when you're having to make these huge increases in the budget to fund for these projects. So, I mean, from my perspective, I prefer, you know, the incremental increases each year rather than kind of keeping it to the bare bone and then suddenly having to jump when we bring on all these new projects.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Counselor Zede.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, I'm not right, and the finance director is not right, right? You're hearing two policy positions, so there's not a truth here. It's a policy question, right, of how you want to allocate the funds. If we, just to play out a couple scenarios, if we leave this in the line and then we don't do any new bonding, then this would eventually fall to free cash. That's where you'd find it. So, now you'd be back playing with one-time money, and I've always thought of that as spinning gold into silver, because you're taking operating money, which in theory recurs every year, which is its biggest benefit, and you're turning it into one-time free cash, and you're arguing about buying a car with it or something, and then you don't know if the 57K will recur. Second point I want to make is, you know, it's a debate how much debt 57K will support, which is actually my broader, more important theme, is how much debt cap do you have left if you assume that 2% is the ceiling? So, I would say, you know, $750 to $1 million is what 57K will support in terms of annual, and it's probably getting worse, and Ethan can attest to that, because as rates go up, obviously, borrowing at what you, we were getting killer rates in the twos, right, and on a muni, and now we're going to be talking about fours, fives, who knows where it's going. So, that's going to diminish our borrowing ability going forward. And then, last question is, if you don't leave it in the budget, where do you get the money from? It's the same answer as everything else. So, next stop will be to debate the tax rate in the fall, and you can decide if you say, I want to collect this money anyways, even though I don't really know what I'm going to do with it, in which case you have it unallocated and it becomes a supplemental, or you simply give it back to the taxpayers, in which case, yeah, you need to find it somewhere else. You have to have a transfer or something. You cannot invent money out of thin air. So, again, I just, every penny should be accounted for. I very much respect the finance director's opinion. I think it's a very valid position. I'm just suggesting, use it or lose it, and not just put things in there that we don't know, because even if 57K doesn't seem like a lot, we could, we have a cut in here for sidewalks for 50 grand, we could put that back in and use it this year. So, pros and cons, two different valid policy positions, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counsel Zede. Counsel Khan.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. There was this debt projection model, I think, from 2020, and I would just encourage that if, to the finance director, to maybe get an update of that. It provides an outlook of what we have debt, what's coming off, and then projections of what's our capability and capacity. I am not going to support this cut. We have a finance director who oversees finances. We're counselors. We have a finance director for a reason, and one of the things that the finance director too is the big picture of the CIP, of the budgets, of what we have for debt. There's a lot of details, a lot of information they have that we don't. And for that simple fact, 57K does not seem much, but we have a finance director, and this is what they've suggested. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Khan. Further discussion? Roll call.
Cutting collectively $57,000. Counselor Khan.
No.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Preston.
No.
Counselor Vogel.
No.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zede.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron.
No.
Counselor Shan.
No.
Motion fails.
Five, five?
I think it passes.
Five, five?
Five.
Five.
Need six.
You need six to pass.
I believe that is it.
Wow. Motion for a 10-minute recess. Becca?
All those in favor? I...
If I might, there's a motion to approve now as amended on the floor, and there's a completed budget order. I'm going to read the budget order and incorporate that into the motion.
I'm going to read the budget order, and I want to break that into...
Yes.
City, a new report raised and appropriated the general fund, some of $78,682,809.71 as the operating budget for FY 2023, of which $35,154,240 is appropriated to the school department. Further, support said appropriations in the general fund. The following sums shall be appropriated from other available funds. Downtown paid parking fund, $987,468.37. Health insurance stabilization fund, $379,675. Recreational revolving fund, $114,886.93. Further, city, a new report raised and appropriated the following sums in enterprise funds. Water enterprise, $6,196,613.56. Sewer enterprise, $7,818,840.15. Harbor master enterprise fund, $520,360.39. And that is the budget order completed for annual FY 2023.
Can you read kindly the water number again for me, please?
The water enterprise fund?
Yes, please. And then the other one is the health insurance stabilization, did you say 379 something?
I said 379,675.
Should that be 404? Isn't that what's in the budget here? 404?
No, we drew down...
Oh, we already took some out.
...without transfers. So this is the balance.
Okay. Okay.